Good afternoon. I am Doug Shipman, Atlanta City Council President, and I am calling to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Atlanta City Council, March 20th, 2023, at 1:00. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the opening role?
Good afternoon, Council President Doug Shipman.
Here.
Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, Matt Westmoreland.
Here.
Keisha Shawn Waits. Jason Winston.
Here.
Amir Faroki. Byron Amos. Jason Dozier. Liliana Bakhtari. Alex Wan. Howard Shook. Mary Norwood. Dustin Hillis. Andrea Boon. Marcy Collier Overstreet.
Present.
Antonio Lewis. Quorum, present.
Thank you. The agenda was set out ahead of time. Are there any changes to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Move by Councilmember Lewis, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Shook. Any discussion on the adoption of the agenda? We can do this via unanimous consent without objection. Any objection to adopting the agenda? Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to adopt the agenda.
Ten yays, zero nays.
Ten yays, zero nays, the motion to adopt carries. Next on the agenda is invocation. We do not have an invocation speaker today, so we will be taking a moment of silence. But before I do that, I just wanted to ask if any of my colleagues had anyone they wanted to recognize. Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, President Shipman. I do want to acknowledge the passing of Ms. Jo Emerson, stalwart community leader in southwest Atlanta, member or HOA president for the Belmont Hills Community Association, active with the Cascade Avenue Neighborhood Organization and Neighborhood Planning in a S. Her homegoing services were actually this morning. I was proud to join her and her family and the community members in support of that, and she will be sorely missed. She's been a stalwart member of our district poor community.
Thank you. Councilmember Boon.
Yes, I would like to offer condolences to the Hamm and Williams family on the passing of Ms. Duane L. Hamm Williams, who was a well-known caterer at the Atlanta Life Insurance Building. She catered for the Honorable Ambassador Andrew Young, Congressman John Lewis, lived in southwest Atlanta, and was a 37-year-longtime educator with the Atlanta Public School System. Today, we honor and celebrate the life of Duane L. Hamm Williams. Her celebration of life will be at the Friendship Baptist Church on this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. Thank you.
Any other recognitions? Would you all please join me in a moment of silence to recognize these and all others unnamed, please? Thank you. Would you please join me in the place... ...pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where? She came for Charles Black.
I don't see her.
But she didn't even tell me she was coming. How about that?
She didn't tell you?
She didn't even tell me she was coming. Because I would have deterred her. I would have deterred her.
Give us just a moment. We're going to slightly reorder the proclamations. All right. First, I would like to invite all of those in recognition of National Procurement Month to come forward. We're going to take that proclamation first so that they can go back to procuring things for the city. And I would... You don't want to hold up that process. I get a lot of calls about that in my office. So, Councilmember Shook.
All right, thank you. And do we have anyone up here for me to hand this to? Well, come on up. Howdy. All right, while you all get organized, I'm going to commence reading. Obviously, not a lot of vacancies in this department. So, on behalf of Mr. Wan, whom I'm pinch hitting for, this is an Atlanta City Council proclamation recognizing National Procurement Month. Whereas the Atlanta City Council is pleased to observe National Procurement Month during the month of March as we recognize our City of Atlanta employees who make a difference in procurement. And whereas this month is celebrated by the Institute for Public Procurement and public purchasing departments across the country. And whereas the City of Atlanta's Department of Procurement is responsible for acquiring all commodities and services for the mayor's office, city council, and all city departments. The entire portfolio of procurement activity for the City of Atlanta is managed by this department. Whereas the Department of Procurement is responsible for operating and examining business practices to ensure taxpayers, customers, and the industry have complete confidence and faith in the city's procurement actions. And whereas, leading with a vision of excellence, the department values creation through... Values, creation through partnership, collaboration, and innovation. The goal is to construct a high-performing purchasing organization that conducts business with integrity by promoting women and diverse suppliers in our community. And whereas their forward-facing mission is to promote fair and open competition, procure high-quality products and services in a timely manner, and meet the needs of customers while maintaining public trust. And whereas the department always ensures the contracting process is transparent, open, fair, and inclusive, and understands how vital it is to creating fair and open competition and breaking down barriers. And whereas the Department of Procurement adds value to the city by carrying out rules such as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, evolving deliberate procurement strategies, and cultivating working partnerships with suppliers and other departments in the city. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Atlanta, do hereby recognize the month of March as National Procurement Month by further expanding awareness of the purchasing professional's role to government officials, the public, and business leaders. And this is signed by all the members of council. So, thank you. Ms. Bond, do you want to make a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Shook, for presenting this honor to the Department of Procurement. Even though we had another honoree listed first, who I think the Department of Procurement would be wise to follow his lead. One of the things I want to congratulate you all is our new procurement director has improved our procedures and made it more accessible. But I would hope, in the spirit of Charles Black, Lonny King, Julian Bond, Carolyn Long Banks, and many, many others, that you would enlist a heart for service for those individuals who... Charles Black among them, who made this city free in 1960, 63 years ago. So that when minority contractors, minority and female business contractors raise issues, and they ask members of the Atlanta City Council to intervene on their behalf, just like I did in January, that we would have a more open heart to making sure that those individuals have every opportunity, every access, to do work here in the City of Atlanta. And I encourage my colleagues that when legislation is introduced, to put forward the issues that are raised by these minority and female contractors that is taken seriously so that Atlanta can continue to be a city of opportunity, can continue to be a city of acceptance and access to lift our business persons to the highest standards, just like Maynard Jackson would have wanted. So with that, I want to say congratulations to you. And I've given you your mission via those who made our city free, like the students in the Atlanta Student Movement, of which Charles Black was the chair of that of the Committee on Appeal for Human Rights. So let's give him a round of applause for being gracious enough to allow you all to go first, though he followed, though we followed the procedure to have him first listed on the agenda. So please carry him on your shoulders as you do your job when you think about people who are trying to bid, when sometimes the systems don't work. If there's other ways to submit bids for small and minority businesses that can't afford the same type... Well, it's more difficult for them to afford those bid preparations, the tens of thousands of dollars that they need to prepare bids. And when the system goes down, that there'd be another way for them to submit their bid. Because we're trying to grow them, not trying to stifle them. So congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other council members wish to make a comment? Mr. Shipman, President Shipman.
Thank you, Councilmember Shook. I just wanted to briefly say that, you know, often we have headlines following when we are the primary actor, when we build a park, when we build affordable housing, when we open something that's new. And those are important functions of the city. But in many ways, the day-to-day work that enables others to fulfill their dreams, others to open their business, others to pursue something that they want to do, others to bring their passion to life, that in many ways is the core function of government. It is not actually to be the producer, but it's allowing every single resident to produce the life that they want. And I just want to say to everybody who's on this stage that I really appreciate the work that you do every day. Because you are enabling people to fulfill their dreams. You're enabling the city to pursue its purposes. And in many ways, I think that's at the very core of what good government looks like. And it is so exciting to see the improvements that have been made by you, Mr. Commissioner, by you, Madam COO. This is something we heard so much about when we were going through the election of 2021, and to see it come to life and to see that improvement, I just wanted to say my personal appreciation to everybody for the work that you do.
And I want to say thank you to the people that work in the department, to say they pull up anywhere. Mr. Jabeeb has been open since I've been elected to meet us anywhere, even on Cleveland Avenue, to talk to folks about how to actually get this stuff done. So I want to say thank you to the folks that come here every single morning, actually getting the work done, who are working that eight-hour shift, nine-hour shift, who are taking these phone calls, who are going through, making sure that every T is crossed, every I is actually dotted. So I want to say I appreciate y'all for the work y'all doing. Thank you.
Madam COO.
Good afternoon, everyone. We're just pleased, on behalf of Mayor Andre Dickens, to salute the procurement team. They are our unsung heroes to make sure we have the services and materials that we need to make sure government operates, to fix the potholes, all of those things. And I know that there's been so many times that the team's work has been under scrutiny, as well as we need to do things better. We are at a place now where they are excelling and exceeding, and will be soon best-in-class in our country. So I just want to thank them all for their hard work. And we don't always see them, but they show up, and now they're actually showing us all the great work that can be done. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Shook. This proclamation is a great tribute to all the men and women in Department of Procurement. They have worked tirelessly to transform the organization. We are seeing some positive results from that transformation. They continue to change the culture within Department of Procurement and also change the culture around them. So, thank you, team. On behalf, this proclamation is a great tribute to all your hard work. Thank you. Thank you for all the help and support. Councilmembers, thanks for all the support that you provide us on a day-to-day basis. Madam COO, without your support, this wouldn't have been possible, the transformation. And the thanks to Mayor Dickens for believing in us. And we are making sure that we are delivering on his expectations. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's all move up to the front and commemorate this moment with a photo.
I'd like to ask all those associated with Charles A. Black to please come forward. All those here and today in support of our first honoree, Charles Black, to please come forward.
Next, we'll have Councilmember Bond honoring Charles Black.
Where is the sheriff? Want to say good morning to... Good afternoon to Sheriff LeBott, Reverend Dearly, former Savannah Councilmember Leon Chaplin, Mrs. Alethea Boone, First Lady. Hey, Sheriff. Come on up, we can fill in on both sides. Come on, we still got room. This is like a church in a jail. There's always room for one more. Civil rights workers aren't afraid to go to jail. Come on, those who are late. The wages of the day are the same. It is an esteemed honor, privilege, and pleasure to be here today to honor one of, just one of the individuals who literally set Atlanta free from the shackles of segregation. That deserves some applause. It is really humbling to be in the presence of... You know, many people say that they follow Dr. King. Many people say that they're a student of Dr. King's philosophy. But it is really an honor to be here in the presence of someone, one of eight, who are actually in Dr. King's class at Morehouse College. The only class he taught at Morehouse College. But before we get to the matter at hand, as we were so rudely interrupted before, we have, as they say on late-night TV, Charles, but wait, there's more. As an actor, you'll appreciate this. We have a video that we would like to show.
So you can see that they represent a whole lot of stars.
Charles Black is taking us through a wall of fame, if you will. He is among the many talented actors represented by People Store, an Atlanta-based talent agency. Black has been acting for over three decades. He's been featured in The Patriot, In the Heat of the Night, and Queen Sugar. He has a Disney film coming out later this month. This day, he's preparing for an audition.
Been out here for a while, Angus. You hungry? I could order some pizza.
He's not coming back, is he?
I don't think he is.
But Charles Black is much more than a great actor. He's also a passionate activist, who, as a student at Morehouse College, had an early introduction to the cause of civil rights during the Atlanta Student Movement back in 1960.
I was approached on campus by Lonny King about what the young men had done in North Carolina, the sit-ins there. And he announced that he's going to have a meeting that night. He invited me to it.
That meeting, led by Lonny King, Julian Bond, and Joseph Pierce, led to the drafting of an Appeal for Human Rights and the initial Atlanta sit-ins. Black was one of eight Morehouse students to take a class called Seminar in Social Philosophy. It explored civil disobedience and nonviolence, Gandhi, and Jesus. Its teacher, none other than Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
It gave us kind of a broader historical perspective for what we were doing. So we had more of an appreciation for the shoulders on which we stood.
When he considers this honor from the Atlanta City Council, his comedic... When he considers this honor from the Atlanta City Council, his comedic timing takes over.
Well, I told Councilman Bond that they must have run out of people to honor, or something. They had a slot they had to fill, so they said, well, you know, we're honored old Charlie Black.
And when asked about his legacy...
Dr. King's favorite song was "If I Can Help Somebody Along the Way," you know, "That My Living Would Not Have Been in Vain," kind of thing. And that's kind of what I want to be remembered for, trying to help somebody.
You did a good job on that.
Oh, thank you, sir.
But now to the moment at hand, we're here to present a proclamation on behalf of the Atlanta City Council. This is the highest award that the City of Atlanta can present. I will read the proclamation in pertinent part, in recognition of Charles A. Black. Whereas the Atlanta City Council is pleased to recognize Charles A. Black, revered and renowned actor, civil rights activist, present and Presidential Medal of Honor recipient. Whereas a native of Miami, Black graduated from Morehouse College in 1962, where he was editor of the student newspaper, a varsity debater, senior class president, chair of the Atlanta Student Movement, and one of only eight students to attend the class taught by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Whereas alongside A.D. King, Dr. King's brother, he inspired a group of students to enter the whites-only lunchroom at the terminal station in downtown Atlanta to protest segregation. He was later hauled off to the city's prison farm along with 76 other protesters. Whereas a member of the Screen Actors Guild, he is a 33-year veteran actor who has several notable acting credits, including in The Patriot, AM Session, Need for Speed, and Selma, and of course, my personal favorite, The Falcon and The Winter Soldier. Whereas he has previously served as chair and CEO of Fronters Unlimited Incorporated and as the chairman of the Board of Trustees of the Hammond House Museum. He is also the past editor of the Atlanta Enquirer. And whereas he currently serves as the chair and the advisory board of the Freedom University, as well as the chair of the Board of the...
Ilean.
Ilean. What is that?
Ilean Adoptions International.
Ilean Adoptions International. And the Board, and the Board of Foundation of Our Children. And whereas he has always carried himself with humility and has labored on behalf of all and human rights. He is a proud family man with two daughters, three granddaughters, and one great-granddaughter and one great-grandson. He is a member of the Camp Creek Church in South Fulton and a lifelong member of the Church of Christ. Now therefore, we, the members of the council, we have the citizens of Atlanta, you do hear by proclaim this day as Charles A. Black Day in our fair city and witness thereof, I have set my hand and have caused the seal of the City of Atlanta to be here and to affixed. Congratulations, Mr. Black.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you.
It's like late-night television, Charles. But wait, there's more. Are there any members of the council that would like to speak? Councilmember Boone.
Civil rights legend, Charles Black. Today I am joined by my mother, Alethea Boone. Come on up, my mother, who was the wife of the late Reverend Joseph E. Boone. On behalf of my entire family, we would like to thank you, Lonny King, the great Reverend Gerald Dearly, and so many more, who made sure that my father was honored in the City of Atlanta. We will never forget your acts, your strength. You walked door to door, shoulder to shoulder, with members of this community, educating them on who the late Reverend Joseph E. Boone was. And I will now let my mother say something. Ms. Boone?
Hello, everyone. It's to God be the glory that we stand here today. Charles, Rush will never forget the sacrifices that you and others made. We love you for eating those hot dogs at Rush Memorial Church. Congratulations.
Special recognition award presented to Charles A. Black, civil rights legend. In recognition of your years of service to the City of Atlanta, you have influenced and inspired citizens of Atlanta by going above and beyond the call of duty in responding to and providing exemplary services to the citizens of this city for decades. We commend you on this March 20th, 2023 date in the City of Atlanta. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Step up, step up, hold on. Mom, mom.
Mr. President.
I just wanted to take a moment. I have had the honor of getting to know Charles over the almost last 20 years. And your willingness to continue to engage in issues of civil and human rights, your willingness to continue to engage with young people, your willingness to continue to tell the stories, has been inspiring to me. I just want to share two quick things. When we opened the Center for Civil and Human Rights, and many of you have been there, you know the lunch counter exhibit, which simulates what it is to be a sit-in protester. I'll never forget when Charles and Lonny King came to visit the first time, and they sat, and they put their hands down, and they put their earphones on, and they listened to about the two-minute track, and they put the headphones back down, and they spun around their chairs, and I said, "How was it?" And they both looked at each other and they said, "Pretty tame." What you endured is unimaginable for so many who were not there. But your willingness to translate that for young people is something that I just can't thank you enough for. The other quick story is that Councilmember Bond mentioned Freedom University. Dr. Emiko Soltes is here. Freedom University, if you don't know, is a nonprofit that works with undocumented students to help them navigate from high school to college and to give them the financial and the social and the academic resources to make that transition. This is yet another example of Charles Black taking the civil rights legacy and putting it into current action. And that is just the epitome of someone who lives their values. And so you are, you are simply a hero, you are a hero to so many of us, and this is incredibly well-deserved. Thank you, Charles.
Thank you, Lord. Appreciate you, Father. Reverend Dearly.
There are times in all of our lives where we hear the term "living legacy." You now are looking at a living legacy. And you're awfully quiet when I say that. I still can't hear you. He can't hear you. I want to thank Mayor Dickens, the city council, and all of those who had anything to do with today. It means a lot for me to look up to this old man. The reason I can call him an old man, when he was leading the students in, here in Atlanta in '60, I was head of all the students in Nashville in '62, and leading to Washington. And we'd always look up and see what he and Ben Brown and Lonny and all of them were doing. And when we went to the counters, we'd look up and we would always look up to you and all that you had done, the humility, the honesty. You exemplified what Dr. King and the movement meant, when you survived, because there were two things that kept us alive. We were willing to sacrifice and risk. You not only sacrificed, but risked, and you stood out there. You were there. And what's so beautiful about a leader like this, he never talked about what he was doing. He never told anybody what he was doing. He allowed God to move in his life and move him to this place. And that's why the City of Atlanta, I speak on behalf of James Orange, and C.T., and Andy, and all of us who were there, you still exemplify what it means. And we in the church, we all get around and sing, "I'm on the battlefield." I've told some people, "I don't care, don't ever sing 'I'm on the battlefield' for me again." Because Charles A. Black was not on the battlefield, he was in the battle. And when you're in the battle, that's a big difference. I've known people on the battlefield that's never had a fight, never been battled. You gave it all, and then you use your skill to continue to educate all of us. So thank you on behalf of all of us who were there with you, all of those behind you, and even though before. You are the contestants of everything that we stand for, stood for, and today, the City of Atlanta honors you. And I'm just glad to be here and speak on behalf of all of us who came through that movement, old man. Thank you, Doc. Sheriff LeBott. So as, as my luck would have it, I get to come behind Reverend Dr. Dearly. Listen, I'm full right now, and let me tell you why. Because he's the original Uncle Charlie. Some of y'all will get that on the way home. But to know, it's not just to love him, right? To this day, I pick up the phone and ask for advice. And when you come from the likes of Joy Thompson, who is my mother, who used to write for the Enquirer at 15, right? An article called "Jumpin' With Joy." But to have your kind of mentorship span generations allows me to be where I am today. And to be amongst the Bonds and the Boones, right? This is, this is old Atlanta history, right? This is where a generation which you helped inspire had sense enough to listen and had sense enough to lead. So thank you, Councilman Bond and Boone, to be in a space that we don't forget where we come from. And that's what this is about. And so every time I see a movie, I pull my son to the side, call him and say, "Remember who I had you call?" Right? Every time I see a commercial that has your gleaming aura that allows us to become better, I get full. But I could not be more full than I am today. Because even on my way over here, you know, you know my mama? She said, "What you doing?" I said, "I'm leaving one meeting." She said, "You better be headed to City Hall." I said, "Mama, Michael already told me, Aunt Charlie already called me." So we love you, and nothing you can do about it. And from the Fulton County Sheriff's Office, as always, if it's anything we can do, you know, we're here for you, and we just are full, full of love. And so I'll get out the way, because you're the star of this show, but I love you. Ms. Julie Black. Black, black with silver buttons, buttons, buttons all down her back.
This is my clone.
Without the beard, I'm glad to not have that. I am so full, and so happy, and so excited to see all these people loving on my father while he's still here, while he's still above ground. So many people are always asking me, "How's your dad doing? How's your dad doing?" I made sure I put this proclamation on Facebook. Come and see how he's doing. Come and love on him right now, right now. These people here have been part of my life for a very long time. We never knew that they would be where they are in the different positions that they're in. But this is my family as well, and I love my dad so much. He's been everybody's Uncle Charlie.
Thank you, Julie, Julie. And my other daughter.
Hi. I wanted to say some of the same things that my sister said, but I would like to start by saying, you know, when you go somewhere and people say, "Do you know who I am? Do you know..." I'd be walking around town like, "Do you know who my daddy is? Do you know who my daddy is?" It's like, he's got proclamations and, you know, awards and things and stuff, and I'm very proud of you as well, Father. And I wanted to say as well, thank you all, friends and family, for showing up while he's above ground and giving him his flowers and his love now. And the love that you're giving him is just radiating out to all of us and into my heart. And I want to say thank you for being who you are and setting the example, going above and beyond, and giving exemplary service. Thank you.
Trying to think of something good to say about it.
Good afternoon. I wasn't planning on sharing any words. My name is Dr. Emiko Soltes, and I serve as the Executive Director at Freedom University, and with me as well is Gabriela Solis. And as was mentioned by President Shipman, Charles has served as the Chair of the Board of Freedom University, which is an underground freedom school for undocumented students, who are also banned from the same public universities that banned black students in 1960. And for the last 10 years, Charles has been a champion for our students. It's not only important that they learn about their human rights and their human right to education, but that they also know that things can change through collective action. And there's no better way to teach that through the stories of Charles, and Rosalind Pope, and Lonny King, and the Atlanta Student Movement. But for Charles, he's not on a board somewhere. He comes to our classrooms, giving big hugs, giving big kisses, telling them that he loves them, and there ain't a damn thing they can do about it. But he teaches us also the skills that our students need to carry on the struggle across generations, across racial lines, across citizenship, and grounded in our shared humanity. And for that, we are so grateful to you, Charles, and we are so, all of the undocumented people in this state, in this country. And I don't want to speak for Gabriela, but we are so grateful for your support and your love throughout all these years. Thank you so much.
We can take our time, because you have the way. We can take as much time as you want.
Just wanted you to see her face. All right, time for me to say something?
Ladies and gentlemen, the man, the myth, the legend, Mr. Charles A. Black.
Thank you most kindly. I'm really kind of embarrassed by all of this. I was telling the guy from Channel 11 a few minutes ago that I've tried all these years to be an undercover brother. You know? But I'm being outed today, and I apologize to all of you for having to endure all of this flattery that I'm getting. I know it's intended. I've got a lot of very interesting people up here. We've often heard people say that it takes a village. This is a village of which I'm a part, that you're looking up at here. I've got three ladies up here that I attended elementary school and high school with. Where are they? Hold your hands up, let them see you. This lady here was my prom date. That was my prom date. Yeah. But there are members of my church family here. Raise your hand, Camp Creek Church of Christ. All right, all right. There are members of my film community up here. Where are the actors? Raise your hand, you actors and filmmakers. And there are some folk here from Rooftop Blues. Hey, that's Howie. Okay. Yeah, he used to be up here with me, Howie, you guys. But I wanted to stress the point that the whole notion of a village is very profound. If you have seen pictures of villages, or you read about them in books, if like me, you grew up in a place like Liberty City, which was in fact a village, you had the butcher, the baker, the candlestick maker, the florist shop, the church, the jail, all of those things, and the people who were the purveyors of services, all were very good at what they did. And they were also very intent on serving the community. But neither one of them thought that they should be doing the other's job. The butcher wasn't trying to arrange any flowers. Okay? The point being that that was the nature of our movement. The point being that that was the nature of our movement. You know, it involved a lot of people with deep commitments to lofty ideals. They committed a lot of different things over a long period of time. Missing any of that, you don't have a movement. You might have an action or a slogan, but you don't have a movement. A village and a movement. Think of those two things together and realize that it takes a lot of different things done by a lot of different people with deep commitments over a long period of time. And during our movement, there were people who were not prepared to go to jail or even walk picket lines and sit in and all that. But they would make sandwiches, they'd make phone calls, they'd make signs, provide transportation. They closed their credit accounts with downtown merchants and sent us their credit cards as proof of that. Some of them put their homes up as collateral to bail us out of jail. And I'm from Miami, Florida. They didn't know me from Adam's House Cat. But somebody's house was on the line when I was arrested and sent to jail. So, all of the things that were done by all of the people at the time is what made for the success of change in the city of Atlanta. A city what's called too busy to hate, but they found time for that. We did remove some barriers, but even today, we must know that it's much more important to build bridges instead of walls. And we must know also that people who are different from us are not necessarily less than us. And if you have a village like my village, you see the village of which I'm a part, and I didn't call out all the categories. I mean, we've got news people here like John Smith of the Atlanta Inquirer with the camera and a whole lot of other people. But if you don't have a good village, find one. Make sure that it's a diverse community of people in terms of their skills and their contributions, but their ethnicities, their religions, all of that. You'll find that you're enriched by that, and your efforts will be much more successful. I'm truly indebted to Michael Julian Bond here, whose father was my tight buddy, one of my favorite people in all the world, and I miss him so much. And his grandfather, who was president of a university, conferred an honorary degree upon Albert Einstein, with Julian Bond sitting by Albert Einstein. Here's a friend of mine, Myrna, over here. You see Myrna, fellow? You've seen her in commercials with me for Northside Hospital. Well, she's from Princeton University, and you used to see Albert Einstein walking up and down the street. And she doesn't look that old, but I mean, you know. So anyhow, I'm truly grateful to the President of the Council and all the Council members and all of you who've come out for this moment. But I wanted all of you to get to see and know each other, okay? Because this is a village that I hope will be a village in touch with each other. My favorite thing in all the world to do is to introduce two people who have something to offer to each other. And when I can do that, that is my pay for the day. And you'll find yourself doing more and more of that if you have a wide, diverse village like this. Thank you so very much, I appreciate it. Let me add one last thing. Andrea Boone's father gave our movement free rent at his church for five years. And that's why we had the name of Street for him, okay? Her husband, Joseph E. Boone. So, when you see these street names, you need to know who some of these people are. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Charles, and what you've given to us, we can never repay. We can only try to emulate you and what you do. And we're going to emulate you right now, we're going to take a picture because you're an actor.
I want to say to the group, if you cannot see the camera, you are denied.
You need to move up front.
I'm kind of undercover anyway, so I don't...
Brian, can you formally introduce me to the councilman? I want to meet the councilman.
Oh, we'll take a picture.
All right, everybody, all eyes on me. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay. If I could ask, if I could ask Councilmember Westmoreland, if Councilmember Westmoreland would come forward? Would all of those here for honoring of the early college high school week would come forward to the podium, please?
All right, everybody, we are going to continue our meeting with our next proclamation, which is going to recognize early college high school week here in the state of Georgia. The early college high school initiative was established back in 2002 as an opportunity for students to earn a high school diploma with the potential to earn either an associate's degree or two years towards their bachelor's degree for free. The initiative sought to focus on students traditionally underrepresented on college campuses. So, first-generation collegegoers, English language learners, students of color, other young folks not as well represented historically in higher education. Georgia's first early college program was established in 2005 at Carver Early College High School. And while that school and that cluster straddles Districts 1 and 12, and I'm joined by my colleagues Jason Winston and Antonio Lewis, I had the opportunity to teach for four years at that school. And so, Carver Early College holds a deep and special place in my heart. And I want to recognize since 2007, Georgia State has served hundreds of students through the early college program at Carver Early College, Booker T. Washington High School, and we are joined by an alumnus of that institution right behind me, Byron Amos, Charles R. Drew Charter School, The Best Academy, The Credit Scott King Young Women's Leadership Academy, Maynard Jackson High School, and D. N. Tharrell. And so, the members of the Atlanta City Council on behalf of the citizens of Atlanta do hereby designate March 20th to the 24th, 2023, as early college high school week in the city of Atlanta, and are so grateful for all that this program has meant for hundreds of students in Atlanta Public Schools. One of them was a student of mine. The most recent email I ever got from Erica Soriano, who is sitting next to me, was about this week and honoring this moment. The very first email I ever got from Erica Soriano was on September 10th, 2013, when she wrote, "Hey, Mr. West, how's your evening so far? Is it okay if I stay after school tomorrow to work to finish my study guide?" And so, I just want to shout out a product of this initiative, both a graduate of Atlanta Public Schools who is receiving her master's degree from Georgia State, and want to hand this proclamation to these three individuals behind us who are representing Georgia State and ask if you have any words that you'd like to share.
Thank you, Mr. Westmoreland. Hello, everyone, my name is Erica Soriano. I am currently a Lead Graduate Research Assistant for the early college program at Georgia State University. I'm also joined with two of my colleagues. You guys want to introduce yourselves?
Hi, my name is Sean Miller. I am the GRA for Carver Early College, and I am a candidate in the dual MBA/MHA program, set to graduate this upcoming May with my dual degree.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jaden Taylor. I serve as the Graduate Research Assistant for Tharrell High School as well as Drew Charter High School. I'm also receiving my master's in public health and am set to graduate this May as well. Thank you.
And I just want to give the opportunity to thank not only Mr. Westmoreland, but also the City Council for allowing us to be here today and recognizing the early college program. As mentioned by Mr. Westmoreland, I am a Carver EC alumni, so I've been with this program since I was a junior. If it wasn't for this program, I wouldn't be here where I am today, which is, you know, getting my master's degree at Georgia State University this semester. And so, I just want to say thank you for you all allowing us to be here today.
And I'll just add one more thing to that. So, even though Erica is an alum of the early college program, I like to take credit for being the longest GRA a part of the program. So, this is my third year working with the program, and it's been an absolute pleasure watching all the students over the years, over the last three years, matriculate into their respective universities and just doing their thing. So, it's been a pleasure, and I am grateful for this opportunity, and I'm excited for the new group of individuals that will come in this fall to join the EC family.
All right, I will hand the mic over to any colleagues who, if they have a word to say, and if not, we will grab a photo.
I would like to say, Erica, I appreciate you. You are what the city talks about when we say we are investing in our students, right? Because to be a part of the program and then come help put on the program the love and the passion that you have for it because you helping somebody to become you. You're a walking, living example every day of it, right? And so, I say, I appreciate you for being that example so that the city can have somebody to brag on, right? And so, thank you, Mr. Matt Westmoreland, for making sure this happened. Anytime you talking about Carver High School, anytime you want some money from Mr. Matt Westmoreland, all you got to do is say Carver High School, and he'll split it down the middle, right? Right, he'll split it right down the middle, and that just shows his investment in youth. I remember on the campaign trail, I said, "The moment I get elected, the investment in youth goes up." The... When I got on council, I figured out how much Mr. Matt Westmoreland cared about youth. I found council members who already were fighting for him. I seen Mr. Byron Amos. When we say APS, you might not see him up here for every picture, you say APS. Mr. Byron know what it comes standing because he knows who he is when it comes to APS in the city of Atlanta. So, this is a connection. I remember on the campaign trail also, they said APS and the city of Atlanta were separated. They said, "We don't talk." So, this is Georgia State, APS, and the city of Atlanta doing a group project to make sure we get some more Ericas out of it. So, that's what I appreciate for going on today. Thank you.
Very quickly, you know, let me speak to the parents that have children in APS right now. You want your child in an early college program. And just not an early college program, a dual enrollment program, because we also have other dual enrollment activities as well. But this is early college week, and I can speak to it specifically because over a time period, of course, I had two daughters and one son to go through the early college program at Washington High School. And over a course of period of time, with them earning college credits in high school, something my tax dollars were already paying for, I saved about $70,000 to $80,000 because those credits transferred into course credits that I did not have to pay for in college. And that is why this program is real. So, fight for your children to get in an early college program or dual enrollment program because once they leave and go on to college, it will save you money. And I know all of us understand what that means. So, congratulations to this week, let's support this week, and thank you.
And this proud Georgia State alum.
And this proud Georgia State alum just has two words: Go Panthers!
All right, let's grab this shot. Let's take the picture.
Next, I'd like to invite Councilmember Amos up and all of those associated with the honor of the Atlanta Hawks and State Farm Arena to please come forward.
So it's ironic, I'm glad to have my colleague Jason Dozier standing here with me, because State Farm is actually in City Council District Four, but they have been able to do something that once again put Atlanta on the world spotlight. So I'm just gonna be very quick. Proclamation from the Atlanta City Council in recognition of the Atlanta Hawks and State Farm Arena. Whereas the Atlanta City Council recognizes the importance of efforts of leading business partners to increase sustainability in all areas across the city. And whereas State Farm Arena as the home venue for the National Basketball Association Atlanta Hawks, a live entertainment venue, and as a major economic engine for the city of Atlanta and the state of Georgia. And whereas State Farm Arena is the first and only sports and live entertainment venue in the world, they say that again, in the world, to receive true platinum certification. This journey began in 2019 when State Farm Arena diverted only an average of 10% of total waste. Since May 2021, the venue has consistently diverted a minimum of 90% of fan-generated waste from landfills. And whereas State Farm Arena boasts LED lighting upgrades, improved plumbing systems for the water efficiency, green housekeeping, smoke-free zones, as a zero-waste facility, the arena shifted from single-stream to multi-stream recycling. The Atlanta Hawks and State Farm diverted more than 2,503,745 pounds of all waste from landfills throughout its 2022 slate of Hawks basketball games, concerts, and auxiliary events. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, do hereby recognize and commend State Farm Arena and the Atlanta Hawks for all of their efforts to increase sustainability and help reduce the efforts of climate change in the city of Atlanta. And it's signed by the council president and all members of the Atlanta City Council. And before someone from the Hawks speaking, one of my colleagues want to speak?
Definitely. I'll be very brief. Thank you, Councilmember Amos. Thank you to the Atlanta Hawks organization. Thank you to the State Farm Arena organization. I just want to say, I truly and deeply appreciate your commitment to sustainability. As you all know, I see our chief sustainability officer, Chandra Farley, is with us. The city of Atlanta is committed to ensuring that we are one of the most resilient cities on this planet with regards to climate change and with regards to environmental justice. And I'd love to see our private entities, our quasi-governmental entities, all working together to ensure we achieve those goals. So thank you so much. Thank you for being who you are, and thank you for being true to Atlanta. So thank you.
Congratulations to the Atlanta Hawks, and especially to our former colleague and friend, Amy Fong, who I had the privilege of working with for nearly eight years in the mayor's cabinet. Thank you for always responding Hawks, always there for the city of Atlanta refurbishing our basketball courts, always there to donate book bags and pencils and provide financial support for all of our communities, especially in the Adamsville and Cuyahoga Heights community. To Amy Fong, you are a jewel, a dedicated and diligent servant to this city. Congratulations.
I had to say thank you. In my district, you all did the first community club, and I can't tell you how important that was. This is at William Walker Rec. And you also always look for ways to help in the community. Many times you said, "Where else can we place a blacktop? I mean, what other organization does that? They come to us to help us figure out where they can help us in the community." And I want to thank you all for that partnership. I've only been on council, this is like year six, and you all have really kept in contact the entire time, and I appreciate that partnership. You all are not just, you know, out there doing the right thing by, you know, NBA and all those other great events that you have at State Farm, but you're doing right in the communities, and that's the important part to me, especially in undeserved communities like mine. And I appreciate that. Just want to say thank you out loud.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to lend my voice and also congratulate the Atlanta Hawks and the State Farm Arena for your great work in sustainability. Also, I have a couple of friends up here, and what you've also done, you've got people on your team that have a lifetime amount of work and work in this area, and it's a passion of theirs. Sophie, you and I have planted trees in Grant Park. Former Commissioner Amy Fong, she's done tremendous work in this sustainability efforts and leading the effort to bring the first lead certified parking structure in Grant Park. And so we thank you for all the hard work that you've done for the city of Atlanta and leading the entire world in this effort. So congratulations to you all again. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Chandra Farley. I'm the chief sustainability officer of the city of Atlanta, and I want to give a little history, and I'm glad that I was called up here today. Back in 2009, there was a secret project going on, and it was called AO. And this is when I just started working at South Face Energy Institute. And it turned out later that this was an effort, AO stood for Arena Operations. And this was an effort to make sure that city of Atlanta's Hawks facility would become the first lead certified sports facility in the nation. We beat out Orlando by a few hours, as the story goes, for submitting our paperwork. So I'm very excited to be here to celebrate State Farm Arena and the Hawks, Sophie, Amy, and this team, particularly on today, when the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change has released another dire report on the state of climate change in the world. And just this weekend, there was an article about why buildings are at the center of city of Atlanta's fight for climate change. So I just want to thank the Hawks Arena for leading us. I'm hoping that City Hall can take and follow in their fifth steps with a true zero-waste certification. That's the challenge I would like to set forward today, and I would like to thank the arena for setting us on that path.
Well, first of all, thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you, Councilmember Byron Amos, and the entire city council for this award. We very much appreciate it. On behalf of the Atlanta Hawks and State Farm Arena and our principal owners, Tony Wrestler and Jamie Gertz, we are truly honored to be recognized for our sustainability efforts, including diverting more than 2 million pounds of waste from landfills over the last year, and again, becoming the first ever true certified zero-waste sports entertainment facility in the world. We have reached these progressive milestones through a collaborative effort with our global partners and my esteemed colleagues that I'm joined by today. Amy, who you've heard, David Lee, who's also on the stage, and of course, standing behind me, you've got Sophie, our head of sustainability, and Jeff Stiles. Jeffrey is our senior vice president of events and facilities, and without their hard work and efforts, this would not have been possible. The Atlanta Hawks and State Farm Arena will continue to be true to Atlanta in doing all that we can to demonstrate world-class sustainability efforts. We work hard to represent Atlanta on the court and in our community as well. Listening to Mr. Black earlier, I took two things that really stuck out to me. He talked about, "It takes a village to really create a movement." And when you think about it, climate change is a real problem, and without doing anything about it, it will be a problem for decades to come. And so as a village, we can do more. And so we look forward to continuing to work with the city council, with Mayor Andre Dickens, to continue to make Atlanta the model as the most sustainable city in the world. And we look forward in that partnership moving forward. So with that, I thank you guys very, very much. Have a great day. Go Hawks! Go Hawks!
One more. I would like to ask Councilmember Amos to stay up here, but ask all of those associated with the honoring of Jerry Clark to come forward today. Come up to the podium. All those affiliated with honoring of Jerry Clark, please come on up.
Oh, boy. Davita, Davita, I'm here. Look, look.
Look, it's Mike's sister.
You know this one?
You know Sue.
Come on, stop.
We ready, everybody, to finish with you?
My mama said she don't want to.
I could be in the photo. I gotta be in the photo.
Oh, look, you said, "Look." Great street, he not coming. Come on, we good. We fine. Go ahead.
Now, we gonna recognize Mama.
Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started with this last proclamation. You know, several years ago during the Music Awards, Andre 3000 said to South got something to say. But we also have to recognize that there are certain people who helped build the foundation of music entertainment and just entertainment period in the city of Atlanta. And Mr. Jerry Clark is definitely one of them. We was waiting to get Mama Clark up here. She say she didn't want to come, but we definitely gonna recognize her, because without her, it definitely would not be him. And without him, the music scene in Atlanta wouldn't be what it is today. So we're gonna move very quickly. Proclamation, Atlanta City Council in recognition of Mr. Jerry Clark. Whereas the Atlanta City Council recognizes the life and contributions of one of Atlanta's most influential entertainment leaders. And whereas Jerry Clark is an on-air personality, former music industry executive, and nonprofit foundation leader who ascended upon the hip-hop community and making strategic moves as an energetic promotion and marketing professional. His passion ultimately served as a catalyst to his legendary relationship skill building, and he served as an architect of an emerging music industry. And whereas in 1997, Mr. Clark launched 1972 Entertainment. It was a good year, brother. As a marketing company with hip-hop and music to a movement, he led industry executives by connecting lifestyle brands to hip-hop culture. He developed the hip-hop styles of fashion, a touring show which primarily promoted the Willie Esco clothing line. He launched a partnership with Reebok and served as a liaison between the brand and the urban community. He also was instrumental in creating Reebok's Urban Seating Program. As a consultant, Mr. Clark enabled Reebok to establish significant market shares in the urban community. And now therefore be resolved that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, do hereby recognize and commend Mr. Jerry Clark for all of his contributions as an architect of the entertainment, nightlife, and music industry in the city of Atlanta. Mr. Clark?
Thank you.
Thank you. Before he's speaking, and my colleagues, anyone else on, I see some other people on stage that want to speak. Now's your time.
Congratulations to the legendary Jerry Clark. Not just for what you have done in the music industry, but for the little children that live in Atlanta, Georgia. You have gone across this city, working with those that no one else wants to work with. You have worked with our seniors. You are a dedicated, and you're diligent, and congratulations on this great honor.
Thank you.
Yes, legendary Jerry, as he's known, for all the work, all of the relationships, all of the things that you've built in your time here. It's well-deserved. Well-deserved. You're a good, you're my friend, and it's, I'm, as the young lady said earlier, I'm full, I'm full in knowing that you're being recognized for your work, not only in your industry, but it's a humanitarian work that you do, and your love for baseball, as we share. Yes, yes, yep. And you've done a lot within the community with the baseball, and we love you for it. And congratulations to you.
I just want to take a moment also, unlike Mr. Paul said, the humanitarian work is most important. Your music career speaks for itself. As a young man that's born and raised in Atlanta, being able to call on you to mentor young folk, to give them the wisdom and steer them in the right direction, and being able to call on you when seniors need food or anything, and you was there with open arms, man, that means more than anything. So I thank you today, the city of Atlanta, thank you today, and we thank District III Office for recognizing you today. So thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Kwanzaa Hall, former city councilman for District Two and congressman. I completed John Lewis's term in the Fifth District. Just wanted to come down and say congratulations, Jerry. Jerry and I go way back. He is a legendary gentleman in our community. He's done great things with young people, great things, helping the artists who are just trying to get started, and many of them have turned out to be phenomenal stars. And they are real legends in our community as well. They're providing jobs, opportunity, and Jerry's doing the same. So thank you, Jerry, for all you're doing. Just wanted to congratulate you.
I am extremely, extremely grateful for this proclamation today. Thank you, Councilmember Byron Amos. Thank you, Councilmember Andrea Boone. Thank you, everybody. There's a slogan that says, "Atlanta influences everything," right here. And I'm just appreciative of the fact that I was able to have my hands in this culture. And I'm just appreciative of the fact that I was able to have my hands in this culture and push this music and push this Atlanta culture forward. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate everybody. This is an incredible day for me. Thank you.
I would ask that everybody stick strictly to respect other speakers for the two minutes. If not, we'll have to cut off your mic or ask you to step down from the podium. First will be Brother Muhammad.
I am, that I am, a nigger's king of kings. And I called on ancestors. I called on the dog matter, antimatter, mama of the Cosmo. The first energy ever created was a feminine energy. And I recognize on the earth, the first physical energy that was created is a feminine energy. I ask you today, members of this city council and all you members that came in and got a proclamation, why is it that you could come to Atlanta and see your peoples on the street? You see your people don't have affordability to live in this city. You have monies that come to the city. Go back to the federal government. Atlanta to return $10 million in emergency rent assistance to the federal government. You got Atlanta losing $4 million federal rent to train low-skill workers. You got Mr. Westmore that said a few years ago, 2018, Atlanta would turn $1.3 million in unspent workforce development money. Where's your voice, dog matter, antimatter? Divine energy, masculine and feminine. You see your people living on the street? All you want to get more money, more money, go in my pocket. But what about your brothers and sisters that live like you? Even you're Caucasian. Some of y'all come down and speak up and applaud you. But why not join in and just make the city and the state do better for the people that live in the capital city of Georgia? The capital city of Georgia, y'all to be exceptional. This state treated dog matter people worse than any state in the union. They killed my people just because they walked on the street. They killed my people just because they didn't have the right of a job and locked them up in the prison institution. The number one prison institution in the United States of America? Georgia, about the fourth largest one. The largest number of people locked in an institution of prison in America? Eighty percent of them look like me. What you gonna do, city council? You have the applause for all these proclamations, but you have nothing for the poor. I greet you. Alhamdulillah. May God help, our share, our share, and our share. Thank you.
Next will be Henry Jordan, followed by Dewan Robinson.
Give me down to the spirit of God, everyone that's here. Why boast thyself a mischievous mighty man? The goodness of God endurest continually, Psalms 52, Chapter 1, verse. Because of his betrayal, dog will be destroyed; the righteous will learn from it. And David, a righteous man, continued to flourish. James, if you betrayed me, and Jesus said, "I can't work with you." Jesus said, "Don't give James the glory for what he has done through me." What is my reward, verily, that when I preach the gospel, I may make the gospel of Christ without charge? That I abuse not my power and the gospel? 1 Corinthians 9, Chapter 18, verse. Paul was given a dispensation, a commission, or stewardship to preach. Jesus have what I need. People are not satisfied. What Christ has assigned for me to do for you will amaze you. If you fight against it, you will be hurt. The fool has said in his heart, "There is no God," corrupt today and have done abominable iniquity. Here is none that doeth good, Psalms 53, Chapter 1, verse. The titles, my king and my God, are rich with meaning. David, though a king himself, is subject to another, and the creator God, who made him, his personal God. To put your behinds in my face is to ask for death. To practice evil looks like a blessing, but it's actually a curse. But when we judge, but when we are judged, we are chastising of the Lord, that we shouldn't be condemned with the world. 1 Corinthians 11, Chapter 32, verse. It is in the spirit of the petition, "By kingdom come, a cry that God's righteous rule bestavish over all men, especially the wicked men." Because we got a sin before God for the deed is done in this body. Right or wrong?
Next will be Dewan Robinson. Due to yielded time, you'll have up to 10 minutes.
Afternoon, council. I want to quote again what my good friend, Hosea Williams, taught me, that he told Andy Yon tonight. He got elected as he was there celebrating with him. He said, "My friend, I will be down at City Hall protesting against you tomorrow, but you are my best friend." So that's respect. And you have to be mature to understand and separate friendship and business. It has come to my understanding that city council have been allowed to tell entities like code enforcement what to do as far as going out citing these properties, coming up with nuisance law. It's not your job to do that. From a legislative standpoint, it's the mayor's job to do that. And the law department, Nina Hickson and her team, is scared to confront you guys and put you in your place and say it's not your job to do that. Mr. Shug, you know it's not city councilman's job to be leading code enforcement, telling them who to cite. We know we got certain people on public safety that is embedded and have an opportunity to take over homes when they do that. Once again, Mr. Lewis, your own public safety. It's not city councilman's job to lead code enforcement to that, my brother. Please look into that. It's not your job to tell code enforcement what to do. Comes from the mayor's office from a legislative standpoint. It's not the job to do that. And I also want to speak on this thing that's been going on over there in Cop City. I want to say this thing. When I seen a group of white kids, well, white adults, I mean, what a group, attacking the police, I seen police running. So that lets me know that white cops do have the restraint, Ms. Norwood, to not shoot and kill. If you can turn and run from a group of white folks, you have the restraint to not shoot and kill. But that's not the case when black folks do it. We are shot dead and we are shot in the streets. So city councilmen, we understand, Mr. Wapmas-Moorely, that they do have restraint. They pick and choose when they gonna do it. We gotta start playing them games, Mr. Shupman, because, not saying you playing games, let me just clarify that. But we have to start playing games in the city of Atlanta to allow these things to happen and say, "Oh, that's protocol." Oh, but if you can restrain yourself and take off running from one group, but you shooting, kill, know what I'm saying, and beat down and pepper spray another group, and we can't allow that. And Mr. Shug, I'm covering a lot, but let me get back because I heard you spoke up to this. The Atlanta Curry Market, I'm ashamed that we got council members that been here for years, Ms. Boone, Ms. Overstreet, Mr. Wes-Mas-Moorely. We didn't know that these people have been getting away without paying rent to the city of Atlanta? Come on, man. I wish Mr. Warren was here, your finance guy that you put back over finance, almost in his area. He should have known that. And I've been noticing a lot of these guys been absent a few times, but then y'all want to make it, y'all want to judge it to show y'all when they come to work and when they don't. But you don't want to hold your old council members accountable? And we can't do that. We gotta stop playing that. We must stop that. You can't do that, Ms. Boone. And I'm not saying you doing that, but if we got people that's absent here, everybody should be held to the same standard. Everybody. Because I guess what? Mr. Warren won't miss a day on finance. I can guarantee you that. He won't miss a day on finance. So we gotta start there doing this, Mr. Shupman, because it was a shameful day that these folk done got away with free rent at the Curry Market for 20 years, and we can't allow that. Like, come on, man. We have to know these things. I know it's your first year. It ain't your job to know, but these senior council members, somebody's supposed to know that. I'm just saying, somebody's supposed to know that. And when we sit here and we honor Mr. Black, man, he said something that shook my soul. He said, "Back then, when we was fighting, Ms. Boone, and your daddy them, black folk were putting their houses up to build for us to get out of there." Man, we just don't do that no more. My grandparents would put out a bottle of milk bottom, which today sits the Civic Center in Georgia Power. We were, my grandfolk was lied to and all that, right? So back in 68, but before 68, in the 30s, 40s, and the 50s, and the 60s, Mr. Lewis, when we wasn't born, black folks couldn't own a business. Through legislation at City Council, couldn't own a business, couldn't own a house down there in that area. So the west side of Atlanta was the only place that they could live, right? So the Fair Housing Act, which Kingdom got passed in 68, was very important because of that reason right there. Do you know in your district, Mr. Dozier and Mr. Lewis district, even on White Hall Street over there, black folks couldn't even buy but $20 worth of grocery. You couldn't buy no more than two gallons of milk. You couldn't buy two loads of bread. You could only feed your family that little bit of stuff. So that's why it's so important for y'all, man, to understand what's good for the white community is good for the black community and the Jewish and so on and so on. We gotta start playing these games and we gotta get rid of people that want to divide black and white. There's a few of y'all on here that's still milling your nose in the business at the school board. Stop it, because I'm on top of that as well. Stop it. Because our black kid that's getting uneducated, can't read, only two black boys out of 10 know how to read. That's a dang-on crime shame. What you think that is out for them in the street, Mr. Lewis? Jail, death, poverty. The only three options, man. But it starts over there APS, so it is all y'all's business. Because it started over there with the leadership. Started over there with the leadership. I'm not afraid to say it. We start playing politics when Shirley Franklin got in office with the school board behind Beverly Hall, Mr. Dozier, Mr. Wapmas-Moorely. Not a friend of y'all, but that's when Atlanta started playing politics with that school board, when Beverly Hall got in office. And we doing the same thing with the mayor and Lisa Herring over there right now. The state of Georgia, I had a meeting with Mr. Kemp last week. State of Georgia had free money for testing. APS decided to give $20 million to virus solution. And y'all wonder why they was making teachers get tested twice a day and the kids going there, because they were paying them $20 million. Virus solution was getting paid $20 million when the state of Georgia had free money for it. We gotta start playing these games with these kids, Mr. Wapmas-Moorely. We gotta stop it. Teach for America. If you join them and you come through them, they teach you how to run for office. Put money behind you when you run for office. And our kids suffering. So when the jails are populated, the graveyards are full, Ms. Boone, because over there, they are miseducated. It ain't never the kids' fault. It's the leadership. At every turn, it's the leadership fault. It's that school board fault over there for weak leadership and playing games. It's big business. The white model or the black model, when it come to business, do not benefit black kids. It does not. No business model, purpose-built, Mr. Dozier, Mr. Winston, Mr. Wapmas-Moorely, does not benefit black kids. It does not. No business model benefit black kids. When you have a $1.4 billion budget, you better believe somebody's getting paid to miseducate and overlook and look, know what I'm saying, do different thing when you got that big of a budget. It always big business, Mr. Lewis. Always big business. Follow the dollars. Follow the donors. Always big business. You can make money and take care of people at the same time. The Atlanta Curry Market, I'm ashamed that we got council members that been here for years, Ms. Boone, Ms. Overstreet, Mr. Wes, Ms. Morley. We didn't know that these people have been getting away without paying rent to the city of Atlanta? Come on, man. I wish Mr. Warren was here, your finance guy that you put back over, finance, almost in his area, he should have known that. And I've been noticing a lot of these guys been absent a few times, but then y'all want to make it, y'all want the judges to show y'all when they come working, when they don't, but you don't want to hold your old council members accountable? And we can't do that. We gotta stop playing that. We must stop that. You can't do that, Ms. Boone, and I'm not saying you doing that, but if we got people that's absent here, everybody should be held to the same standard. Everybody. Because I guess what? Mr. Warren won't miss a day on finance. I can guarantee you that. He won't miss a day on finance. So we gotta start there doing this, Mr. Shipp, because it was a shameful day that these folk done got away with free rent at the Curry Market for twenty years, and we can't allow that. Like, come on, man. We have to know these things. I know it's your first year, it ain't your job to know, but these senior council members, somebody's supposed to know that. I'm just saying, somebody's supposed to know that. And when we sit here and we honor Mr. Black, man, he said something that shook my soul. He said, back then, when we was fighting, Ms. Boone, and your daddy them, black folk were putting their houses up to build for us to get out of there. Man, we just don't do that no more. My grandparents would put out a bottle of milk bottom, which today sits the Civic Center in Georgia Power. We were, my grandfolk was lied to and all that, right? So back in sixty-eight, but before sixty-eight, in the thirties, forties, and the fifties, in the sixties, Mr. Lewis, when we wasn't born, black folks couldn't own a business. Through legislation at city council, couldn't own a business, couldn't own a house down there in that area. So the west side of Atlanta was the only place that they could live, right? So the Fair Housing Act, which Kingdom got passed in sixty-eight, was very important because of that reason right there. Do you know in your district, Mr. Dozier, in Mr. Lewis's district, even on White Hall Street over there, black folks couldn't even buy but twenty dollars worth of groceries. You couldn't buy no more than two gallons of milk, you couldn't buy two loads of bread, you could only feed your family that little bit of stuff. So that's why it's so important for y'all, man, to understand what's good for the white community is good for the black community and the Jewish and so on and so on. We gotta start playing these games, and we gotta get rid of people that want to divide black and white. There's a few of y'all on here that's still milling your nose in the business at the school board. Stop it, because I'm on top of that as well. Stop it, because our black kid that's getting uneducated, can't read, only two black boys out of ten know how to read. That's a dang on crime shame. What you think that is out for them in the street, Mr. Lewis? Jail, death, poverty. The only three options, man. But it starts over there APS, so it is all y'all's business, because it started over there with the leadership. Started over there with the leadership. I'm not afraid to say it, we start playing politics when Shirley Franklin got in office with the school board behind Beverly Hall, Mr. Dozier, Mr. Wapmes, Morley. Not a friend of y'all, but that's when Atlanta started playing politics with that school board, when Beverly Hall got in office. And we doing the same thing with the mayor and Lisa Herring over there right now. The state of Georgia, I had a meeting with Mr. Kemp last week. State of Georgia had free money for testing. APS decided to give twenty million dollars to virus solution. And y'all wonder why they was making teachers get tested twice a day, and the kids going there, because they were paying them twenty million dollars. Virus solution was getting paid twenty million dollars when the state of Georgia had free money for it. We gotta start playing these games with these kids, Mr. Wapmes, Morley. We gotta stop it. Teach for America. If you join them and you come through them, they teach you how to run for office. Put money behind you when you run for office, and our kids suffering. So the jails are populated, the graveyards are full, Ms. Boone, because over there, they are miseducated. It ain't never the kids' fault, it's the leadership at every turn, it's the leadership fault. It's that school board fault over there for weak leadership and playing games, big business. The white model or the black model, when it come to business, does not benefit black kids. It does not. No business model, purpose built, Mr. Dozier, Mr. Winston, Mr. Wapmes, Morley, does not benefit black kids. It does not. No business model benefit black kids. When you have a 1.4 billion dollar budget, you better believe somebody's get paid to miseducate and overlook and look, know what I'm saying, do different thing when you got that big of a budget. It always big business, Mr. Lewis. Always big business. Follow the dollars, follow the donors. Always big business. You can make money and take care of people at the same time. We don't have to uneducate our people, and we basically killing them morally, physically, and spiritually. I'm getting the data from Ms. Funny Willis. Ms. Mary Norwood, do you know in the last fourteen years, eighty-seven percent of the crime from young black males that come from APS students, Mr. Wapmes, Morley? Eighty-seven percent of the young black males that have been killed or been in jail, Mr. Lewis, eighty-seven percent have been APS students. We have failed our kids in Atlanta. Only in Atlanta, you got APS, City Hall, the Solicitor's Office, the Sheriff's Office, a Fourth Circuit Commission, and the judges, in a one-block radius, and don't none of us talk. Y'all don't talk to each other to see, how can I help you? It might not be your job, Mr. Lewis, or Ms. Waits to go over there, Ms. Boone, but as a leader, it is, though. As a leader, it is, though. Did you think it was Master King's business, going to Memphis? No, it wasn't. But he cared about the garbage workers. He cared about poor black folks all around. Did you think it was the white folk's business in Boston who caught the Buster Selma to make sure that they didn't get sprayed and killed on that day? Wasn't their business, but morally, it was. Spiritually, it was their business. As a leader, everything is your business, Mr. Lewis, everything. So if you unbought and unbossed, guess what? Everything is your business. Everything. The county, the city, the school board, everything is your business, Mr. Dozier. Everything. Everything, man. We must stop this, man. Our kids are really out here dying. I don't get paid for none of this. I don't want nothing from none of y'all, man, but to do the right thing. It amazes me when you run for office, you pull your heart out, oh, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that. But once we get in, man, come on, man. If you truly believe in God, you don't have to be tied to who used to be. You don't have to be tied to that, man. Stand on your faith and do what's right for the people, man, because we all know the city already bought and sold, but at least let us get at the table to negotiate some terms. Hey, we know it's bought and sold for. We know who bought and sold for. Y'all's job is to stand in the middle and say, hey, man, listen, we understand you gonna build this four-hundred building high-rise.
Time is expired.
Give thirty percent to the, know what I'm saying, affordability rate. We can't stop you from doing that. Thank you, Mr. Shippman, but I'm just saying, hey, guys, please, we gotta stop this, man. Please.
Next will be Margie MacLeod, followed by Kiana Jones and the prophet Curtis Harrison Martin, sorry, Curtin Martin Harrison.
Good afternoon, everybody. That was, woo, a speech. I'm not going away. I'm still staying here. Rent control, put it on the ballot. We could do it. You got sixteen members. Y'all strong. Y'all got the power, and you could do it. And I'm not going nowhere over street. You're, you in my, I'm in your district. So I'm a spec for you to vote for rent control to be put on the ballot. Mary Norwood, I know you helped pay people rent. We go back. I know Boone, I know you too, I know all of y'all. The people is crying. We need rent control on the ballot. Y'all could do this, because just like y'all had the people, the seniors came to me and asked me, I like your shirt. I said, but this is a movement. I'm not just wearing this shirt. I'm doing it. I'm at the Capitol, but I know the city could do it. Mayor, you got the power. Put rent control on the ballot. The people have to be heard. I'm not going away, so next time I come back, I got people. You have students, you have the fire department, you have the police. We got all these people. The rent is going higher and higher, and what they're saying, they're telling you the truth. We cannot fall on rent in the city of Atlanta. It's gentrification. Y'all say y'all love your people that's in your district, put rent control on the ballot. And I mean, when this election is in April, we gonna have this on the ballot. I'm not just gonna be the only one coming down here. You gonna see, because the people got the power. And power to the people. And yes, we can.
Next will be Kiana Jones.
Good afternoon, once again, to this council, and I have to stand here in solidarity with my brother Dewan, with Ms. Margie, with the people of Atlanta. And I do also notice that there are quite a few who are absent. Ms. Overstreet, it's nice to see you, because you've been absent for a while. Mr. Shook, it's good to see you. You've been absent for a while. And what I want y'all to do is stop lying to the people. Because, see, when Ms. Henry came up here, she started out with a Bible verse that said, why boastest thyself in mischief, O mighty man? The goodness of God endureth continually; thy tongue deviseth mischief like a sharp razor, working deceitfully. And all of you are workers of iniquity. Because what I want y'all to stop saying to the people is that you have no power to cancel the lease for Cop City. I want y'all to go back and read that lease, if you didn't read it the first time, and simply voted blindly. And for those who are new, that didn't see it until they came in, section four point three, this council can pass a resolution. And this sixteen of you up here, it don't take but ten, because even if the mayor vetoes it, the ten of you can override it. And now is the time that you say, whose side you on? Are you on the freedom side? Are you on the people's side, or are you gonna stay on the ass-kissing side? Because I see you gave the Hawks a proclamation. They're one of the biggest funders to the Atlanta Police Foundation. And if you didn't know it, do your homework and do your research, and stop giving money in proclamations to things that will oppress the people who you are supposed to represent. My call to you today is to stop lying and stand up. If you don't, if you don't have a pair, I will give you a pair to stand with, because mine are brass and they don't break. So that's why you gonna keep seeing me. That's why I'm gonna keep calling you out, and that's why I don't care who you are or where I see you. I'm gonna make sure to remind you to stop all that lying, because the Bible says that a liar will not tarry in God's sight. And I don't care how much makeup you got on and how heavy it is. God don't like ugly, and he ain't fond of pretty either.
Next will be Prophet Curtis, followed by Carlton Ham and Alan Lee.
Again, there we go. There we go again. See, no justice, no peace. You know, when, I agree with the Reverend and the brothers, Dewan and everybody else, on the simple fact that the mother kings, that injustice anywhere is a threat to injustice everywhere. Truth crushed to the earth, she arise again. Now, should I break that down? I only got the two minutes, so I can't break that down. But at the point that Atlanta is becoming a sex city and a money city. Y'all got clubs everywhere. I'm in your district, Ms. Mary Norwood and Shook. You say something wrong to one of these guys that own one of these clubs, then y'all cops pulled me over. You pulled me over and gave me a ticket. I forgot to go get my license. You know why? Because I volunteer girl basketball. I forgot to go get my license, because I'm raising little girls that don't got daddies. But y'all follow me up and down the street, because I'm here. Now, like I said before, I ain't saying no justice, no peace. I'm saying to you, touch not matter nor do my profit no harm. I'm saying to you, when the wind start blowing, y'all need to go home. When the wind start blowing, you need to get scared. That's what I'm saying to you, and you. Now, like I said before, you fired me from Omni, you fired me from Omni Hotel, y'all fired me from Home Two Sites, y'all did, but y'all hiring foreigners, and y'all firing black people. The same black people y'all honored, their relatives, earlier today. The same African-Americans y'all honored, y'all firing their relatives off jobs. Like I said, you can write this down, write the profits where it's down. When the wind start blowing, get scared.
Next will be Carlton Ham, followed by Adam Lee, I'm sorry, Alan Lee and Ronald Green.
Good afternoon. My name is Carlton Ham. I've worked for the city of Atlanta for twenty-eight years. I'm in watershed at the time, but I've moved through the watershed system. Started at SOAR, then I moved to RMA Clayton, which we cleaned the water and dumped it back into the river. Safety is first. Everyone needs water. You can't live a life without water. But it seems like we're not important. Watershed isn't important, Public Works isn't important, but that's important for garbage. Every year, when the budget comes out, it seems like we have to fight for pennies. Every year. The police get what they want. We, we need safety. So the police gets what they, what they want, but we never get anything. For the last four or five years, police have got ten percent, ten percent. Just recently, they got nine percent. We're always left out. Watershed, Public Works, parks and wrecks, we're always left out. Now we're fighting for the four dollars and twelve cents that was given to us earlier. Now we have to fight again to keep what was given to us, which doesn't make sense to me. It seems like we're always fighting, coming down begging city council to please give us some, some money. Please give us some money. Now we're fighting to keep the money that was given to us. It just isn't fair. It's a shame that every year we have to come down and fight for money, when safety's first. We make sure you have water and make sure that the water is safe to drink and to use, but every year, we're fighting, and here we are, fighting again another year. Thank you.
Next will be Alan Lee. Due to yielded time, you'll have six minutes.
Well, good afternoon, members of the council. I am Alan Lee. I come as one, I stand as many. I speak today on behalf of the Georgia Federation of Public Service Employees. And I wrote a couple of cheat sheets or notes as I listened to some of the speakers earlier. Heard my good friend Dewan talk about everything is your business, and everything is your business. And I'm gonna hold this council to that, and I'm gonna remind my friend that everything is this council, council business. I'm gonna talk about some controversial things, and I'm gonna give you a different perspective. Let me start off with my friends over at the police union, and I represent police officers around this country. But I say to this city council, enough is enough relative to the pay raises. Give you a little historical perspective. Kasim Reed ran, one police endorsement, wham, bam, thank you, ma'am, they got almost an instant pay raise. Then that same police union got pissed off at him and engaged in a lawsuit. They put up signs across the city that said, Kasim Reed, don't support public safety, enter at your own risk. So they went from fast friends to enemies. And then they resolved the lawsuit, wham, bam, thank you, ma'am, they got another pay increase. Fast forward, new election, this time they endorsed Mary Norwood. And Mary Norwood didn't win. I'm gonna get her attention, though, because I like Mary. Mary Norwood didn't win. So Keisha Lance Bottom prances in and becomes a fast friend. She says she's going to become known as the Public Safety Mayor. Ten percent one year, ten percent the next year, ten percent the following year. Three years, thirty percent. And then she became the darling of the police department, until she wasn't, ran her out of here. My point is, the relationship is transactional. See it for what it is. Now we have my good friend, Mayor Dickens, and he is a good mayor. And let me part company quickly and publicly from those who say otherwise. Let me part company with those that say he's a sellout. I know sellouts when I see them. You got a lot of Stephen Fetching, bootlicking folks here in Atlanta, and he ain't one of them. Now, when he's right, we gonna keep him right, and when he's wrong, we gonna help him find right. But I will not be part of a climate or foster an environment that allows us to denigrate a black man, that allows us to come in here and tear him down. I know something about protest. I'm about that life. I'm more than just coming up here shouting and screaming in a mic. Nobody can match my activism here in Atlanta and around this country. I know about taking it to them. So I just want to say to this council, sometimes I see you guys, and sometimes I disagree, but by and large, I don't question your integrity. By and large, don't question your motivation. In fact, I find it somewhat insulting when folks parachute in here and want to lecture Councilmember Boone on civil rights. Miss me with that. Parachute in here, want to lecture Councilman Bond on civil rights and activism. Miss me with that. Want to prance in here and attack Councilman Lewis, who has the heart of a lion and who is an activist activist. And I know this because he's worked under my tutelage. I know he cares. So I wanted us just to put a break on how quick we are to upbraid and down people. When they got it coming, damn it, let's give it to them twice. But let's be careful not just to characterize and blast everyone as sellouts. Now, let me talk a little bit about Cop City in my last minute. Whether you want to call it a training center or Cop City, I really don't care. I do believe we need a sophisticated training center, but I also accept the fact that we can't train hearts. I do not believe, and I think we make a mistake, when we say these, there's twenty-one white folks parachuting in here. Let's just have an honest conversation. There are a lot of people that look like me that'll have opposition to this. So let's not try to create a fake narrative. The police department and police officers have a lot of bridge building to do, a lot of trust to reclaim. And I say this about the bad apples. Until our good apples speak up, they all bad apples. And until our good apples speak up, the root upon which they grow is no good. This council has a special obligation, and I'll share this with the good mayor, and he is a good mayor. And I'm glad to see him appoint a committee. We need to tweak it, we need to be inclusive, and we don't need to characterize this as a bunch of outsiders coming in. And to those outsiders that claim they love trees, you can't come here and talk about you love trees and them burning trees. You can't talk about loving the environment, loving my people unless you there all the time.
Time is expired.
Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. My time is up.
Thank you. Next will be Ronald Green, followed by Tracy Thornhill, and then James Davenport.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Ronald Green, and I'm coming on behalf of Public Works. I work in this great city we call Atlanta, and I provide great service to the customers, the residents that live in this city. I work in a city that I can't even afford to live in. I provide sanitation service and clean up a city every day that I can't even afford to live in the worst part, the hood of the city. And if I was to provide the service based upon what I made, I think I would be fired. I'm just asking on behalf of my department, my brothers and my sisters, y'all are all my brothers and my sisters, if y'all could come together and provide us with a salary not only that we would be proud of, but a salary that I wouldn't have to actually put back the cheese to get a carton of eggs. So if y'all can do that for us, we'd be more than happy to come out here and work even harder to make sure we keep this city, keep this city maintained, clean, and moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Next will be Tracy Thornhill, followed by James Davenport and Lynette Grant.
Good afternoon, council. Been sitting here listening, my good friend Alan Lee kind of summed up everything for us. You know, we waited and we've given police, over the years, about twenty-nine, thirty percent, but we have not looked out for those parks and wreck workers, those watershed workers. those watershed workers, sanitation workers that's out there with their lives on the line every day. When I think about the COVID, I remember at one point, we was 80% down. We had nobody at work, but we still got the job done. But did we get anything? No, we did not. I think about when we had COVID, we had people dying. And every other month, we was going to a different funeral of a coworker. Did we get anything? We still came to work. And I heard the lady say earlier that it's 16 of y'all, they only need 10. I know 10 of y'all personally. When we leave here, when this budget start, I'm gonna need that 10. I'm gonna need that 10 to give those workers what they deserve. And I'm not talking about 1%, 2.5%. I'm talking about make these workers whole. Make them feel like they want it. Make them feel like they're needed. Because they out there working every day. I see them, I ride by them, I talk to them, I sit down with them, I go and eat lunch with them. And make it to the point to where they can't afford to live in the city in which they work. We wanna live in the city. I guarantee you, if we lived in the city that we worked in, it would be a hell of a lot safer than what it is now. Because if you went to some of the city workers' houses that live out on the outskirts of the city of Atlanta, and you went to those neighborhoods, you'll see how they keep their neighborhoods up. You can't tell it now, you know why? Because they don't live here. Make it affordable for us to live here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. James Davenport. Yes, could you pass out the materials? Mr. Davenport, Mr. Clerk, thank you.
Thank you so much. First, give an honor to God, who I oftentimes call my conductor. I don't have a PhD, but I do have a G O D. Uh, council members, it's, it's sad that I have to stand here. I mentioned to you all before that a police officer put handcuffs on me to take me to the hospital. However, he tore my rotator cuff. And in that sheet, that top sheet that you will see listing only follow-up for the left shoulder, that was after I took the MRI. This officer, as you all know, I've given you the information before, Officer Dawson, seemed like he was possessed the way he handled me. Um, I had been calling 911 having anxiety attacks previously. Someone had breached my apartment. Two weeks ago Thursday, someone breached my apartment. I walked in, they were there. Through the streets, I did a diversion tactic. I was able to get away. As I mentioned to you before, we don't put money where money is necessary. Which leads me to tell you, Cop City's not in our best interest. We have a housing problem. Um, city of Atlanta sold Peachtree and Pine Building. All these homeless ass people that we have, you all have the ability to reclaim that facility. Take some of that $30 million and fix that place up so we can get these people off the streets. When Kasim Reed closed Peachtree and Pine, the merchants downtown were complaining about the homeless begging. I'm begging you all to help these people. I've asked you to fund.
Time is expired.
Lift work, lift rise for senior citizens. Some of that money you can do. Come on, y'all, have a heart.
Time is expired.
And the reason I wear this vote today.
Mr. Davenport.
Yes, sir. And I want you to remember, when we voted for you, you thanked us. But now you take a deaf ear. You all, you all don't even pay attention. People are begging you all not to waste that money.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
What you wanna do. Thank you so much.
Uh, next will be Lynette Grant, and then Palmetto Starr.
Good afternoon, Atlanta City Council persons. Now, what I'm about to say, I am very sincere about this from the bottom of my heart. I, my name is Lynette Grant. I live in District 11. I've been there since 1981. I'm still there, I'm not going anywhere. Now, last year, when I heard on the news that Atlanta, Georgia, received $10,000 in federal funds and did not use the money, and we lost it, I just thought that was the worst thing that I could hear. Why? My question is to the mayor and the city council, why did you all allow that money to be returned? Why? I want an answer at some point. So y'all need to work on figuring out how I'm gonna get the answer, Ms. Ogles Street, if you even have to call my house. All right. Next concern I wanna bring out is, when is District 11, which is where I live, I've been there since 1981, which is the Hamilton Road, Greenbrier community, going to, going to receive attention to the needs to improve the overall community? The people in my community do not feel that we are being adequately served by our elected official. The mayor and the city council also needs to find a way, needs to find human ways to help homeless people on the street. I used to work with homeless people as a social worker. My background is in social work. Uh, the city has many empty buildings throughout this town that I have seen. And that I feel could be turned into comprehensive housing units to house the homeless on the street right now. And last, I want to say, as a longstanding resident, I expect all of you who we elected to do your job and create good community engagement with the people that, so that you can hear what we feel and what we need.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
I don't feel that we have a lot of good community engagement from the city council members. I was very strong about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker today will be Palmetto Starr.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Palmetto Starr. I'm the host of Two Rolf for TV. And if you hear my voice, then you're part of the revolution. I just wanna say, I am not an Atlanta resident. I am an American refugee. I had to leave the slave state of South Carolina to come here because of renegade cops, because of me waking up the people in my state. We have a unique opportunity here in Atlanta that everybody around the world sees, except for the people in Atlanta. It seems that the people in Atlanta do not see this opportunity we have here. Imagine, if you will, that Obama went off the script and said that all black people meet here, we're gonna talk about some real things. How that would change the power dynamics in this country right now. We have a unique opportunity to do that. It, uh, there's a quote that says, "It's not that we fear our inadequacies, it's that we fear that we are powerful beyond measure." Right now, we are powerful beyond measure. And it's time for us, and I use the analogy of a script because this is black Hollywood. So I, I use that script because in this script, we keep on getting killed at the first part of the movie. In this script, we keep on being enslaved and imprisoned. In this script, we keep on being disfranchised. So it's time for us to get off the script and get into our power. And it's not gonna happen by votes. It's not gonna happen by money. It's not gonna happen by any of that paper. It's time for us to get off the script and make some real change. And stop Cop City because you know it is wrong. Thank you.
I wanna thank all members of the public who took time to come today to share their thoughts with the council. We will now move to the report of the journal. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Thank you. I, Vanessa Walden, Deputy Municipal Clerk of the City of Atlanta, do hereby certify that the action minutes of the March 6, 2023 regular meeting of council are true and correct.
Are there any changes or additions to the minutes? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to adopt. Moved by Councilmember Lewis, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Hillis. Any discussion on the motion to adopt the minutes? We do this via unanimous consent. Without objection, any objection to the move, motion to adopt. Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to adopt the minutes.
And unanimous consent is 10 yeas, 0 nays.
10 yeas, 0 nays, the motion to adopt the minutes carries. Next, we'll move to communications. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Communications, number 123, excuse me, C5047. A communication from council members Jason Winston, District 1, Amir Faroki, District 2, Byron Amos, District 3, Jason Dozier, District 4, and Michael Julian Bond, Post One at Large, appointing Ms. Carrie Byrne to serve as a member of the Stakeholder Oversight Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years. Staff recommendation is to refer to Transportation and Committee on Council.
Let the item follow that course.
Council President, I'd like to take items 2 through 6 as a block.
Without objection, please proceed.
23C5048, a communication from Councilmember Dustin Hillis, appointing Mr. Keith Sharp to serve as a member of the Chattahoochee Brick Company Memorial, Greenspace, and Park Board. 23C5049, a communication from Councilmember Dustin Hillis, appointing Ms. Ola Reynolds to serve as a member of the Chattahoochee Brick Company Memorial, Greenspace, and Park Board. 23C5050, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Mr. David Gettichew Smith, Sr., to serve as a member of the Chattahoochee Brick Company Memorial, Greenspace, and Park Board. 23C5051, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, reappointing Ms. Janice Ware to serve as the Fulton, I'm sorry, to serve on the Fulton County of Atlanta Land Bank Authority. This appointment is for a term of four years to begin retroactively on March 18, 2023, and expire March 17, 2027. 23C5052, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Ms. Michelle Nelson to serve on the Fulton County City of Atlanta Land Bank Authority. This appointment is for a term of four years to begin retroactively on May 1, 2021, and expire April 30, 2025. All four communications are set to, I'm sorry, are recommended to be referred to Community Development and Human Services Committee and the Committee on Council.
Let all of the items follow that course.
23C5053, a communication from Chief Procurement Officer Jiddit Manjuba, submitting the February 1, 2023, through February 28, 2023, monthly contracts report to the City of Atlanta and Clerk of Council pursuant to Section 2-1142 of the Atlanta City Code of Ordinances. Staff recommendation is to accept and file.
Let the item follow that course.
That concludes communications.
Are there any items that are vetoed for consideration today?
There are none, sir.
Is there any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to the Consent Agenda, Section 1. It begins on page 5 of the materials. These are items for second reading. The appropriate motion will be to adopt. But first, let me ask my colleagues if there are any items for removal from the consent agenda. Councilmember Shook.
Uh, yes, thank you. I need to remove from page 7, item number 10, which is 23O1137, so that I can bring forward a substitute during the finance report.
Noted. Any other items from removal from the Consent Agenda, Section 1? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the one item removed. Moved by Councilmember Shook, seconded by Councilmember Hillis. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, Section 1? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt Consent Agenda, Section 1, with the one item removed as noted.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. 10 yeas, 0 nays.
10 yeas, 0 nays, the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, Section 1, carries. We'll now move to the Consent Agenda, Section 2. It begins on page 17. These are items for first reading, and the appropriate motion will be to refer. But first, let me once again ask if there are any items for removal by my colleagues from the Consent Agenda, Section 2. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to refer. Moved by Councilmember Norwood, seconded by Councilmember Shook. Any discussion on the motion to refer the Consent Agenda, Section 2? We can move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer the Consent Agenda, Section 2.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. 10 yeas, 0 nays.
10 yeas, 0 nays, the motion to refer carries. We will now move to the Report of Standing Committees. Uh, today, first committee on the agenda is the Community Development and Human Services Committee Chair Dozier.
Thank you, President Shipman. Uh, CDHS has no report this, this week.
Thank you. Next will be the Transportation Committee Vice Chair Lewis will be giving the report today.
Thank you, Mr. President. Transportation Committee has two items that we would like to move forward today. Uh, the first one is 230, 230, no, 23O1133. An ordinance by Transit, by the Transportation Committee authorizing the chief financial officer or his designated to amend the fiscal year 2023 general government capital outlay fund, fund budget on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation by transferring impact fee funds to transportation infrastructure projects in the sum of $3,846,028.00 for the purpose of capital and system improvements and for other purposes. This item was four yeas and one extension. Councilmember Norwood requested information from ATODOT regarding the use of impact fees on transportation projects. The requested information has been received. Motion is to adopt.
There's a motion to adopt coming out of committee. It does not need a second, 23-O-1133. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. 10 yeas, 0 nays.
10 yeas, 0 nays, the motion to adopt carries.
Number 2, Mr. President, is 23O1134. An ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated to apply for grant funding from the Georgia Department of Transportation. If awarded, to accept such funding to enter into any necessary grant agreements to amend the fiscal year 2023 into government grant fund budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations up to $2,000.00 to increase the budget amount authorized by the Georgia Department of Transportation for downtown city hall vicinity street res servicing project and for other purposes. This item was four yeas and one extension. Councilmember Norwood requested information from ATODOT regarding the use of the $2 million of the LMIG grant used for the state roads. What portion of the roads referenced in the project for this legislation are state roads? And a list of state roads in the city of Atlanta? The requested information has not been received. Motion to adopt.
There is a motion to adopt coming out of committee. It doesn't need a second. Um, is there any discussion on the motion to adopt?
Well, a little bit more. It has been received. That paper has been received. It came in a little late, it has been received.
Sorry, it has, the information has been received.
Yes.
Thank you. So there's a motion to adopt. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt twenty-three dash oh dash one one three four? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Ten yays, zero nays.
Ten yays, zero nays, the motion to adopt carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is all for me.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Next up today will be Finance Exec, Vice Chair Shook.
Thank you, President Shipman. Let's take item, or Resolution twenty-three R thirty-two eighty-five. This is a resolution by Councilmember Juan, as substituted by Finance Exec Committee, requesting the mayor takes into consideration and funds priorities that the Atlanta City Council recommends be included in the FY twenty-four budget and for other purposes. And I'd like to bring forward a substitute that folds in the latest submissions.
So there is a motion to bring forth a substitute. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Councilmember Hillis. I'm assuming that all members have the substitute.
They've been distributed, yes.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion to bring forth the substitute? Hearing none, we move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to substitute.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Ten yays, zero nays.
Ten yays, zero nays, the motion to bring forth the substitute carries.
Move approval on substitute.
There's a motion by Councilmember Shook to approve twenty-three dash R dash three two eight five as substituted. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Overstreet. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt as substituted? Hearing none, we can move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt as substituted.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Eleven yays, zero nays, with Councilmember Boone voting yes.
Eleven yays, zero nays, the motion to adopt as substitute carries.
All right, thank you. And then I pulled from Consent Agenda, twenty-three oh eleven thirty-seven, which needed some cleanup regarding account information. The caption is different, so let me read the caption before making a motion to bring the substitute before us. This is an ordinance by Mr. Amos, substituted by Finance Exec, and substituted by the Atlanta City Council, waiving the city code sections listed here to authorize the mayor or his designate execute contracts with sponsors, performers, artists, venues, and vendors necessary to effectuate the City of Atlanta's hosting of the 2023 National League of Cities Summit, to authorize the City of Atlanta to accept donations for the purpose of supporting the city's responsibilities related to hosting the summit in a total amount not to exceed $500,000 through December one of 2023, to amend the fiscal year 2023 budget by transferring funds from the general fund non-departmental account to the National League of Cities City Summit Trust Fund in the amount of $250,000 to support the summit, to authorize all costs to be paid from and all revenue and donations to be deposited into the accounts listed and for other purposes. And I would move to have this substitute brought before us.
There's a motion to bring forth a substitute for twenty-three dash oh dash eleven thirty-seven. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Amos. Is there any discussion on the motion to bring forth the substitute? Hearing none, we move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to bring forth the substitute.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Ten yays, zero nays.
Ten yays, zero nays, the motion to bring forth the substitute carries.
Move approval on substitute.
There's a motion to adopt as substituted, twenty-three dash oh dash eleven thirty-seven, by Councilmember Shook. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Amos. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt on substitute? Hearing none, we move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt as substituted.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Eleven yays, zero nays.
Eleven yays, zero nays, the motion to adopt as substituted carries.
That concludes report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can I make a motion to send that to the mayor's office post haste?
There's a motion to move post haste by Councilmember Westmoreland, seconded by Councilmember Shook. Is there any discussion on the motion to move the item post haste? We can do this via unanimous consent without objection, any objection to the motion to move post haste. Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to move post haste.
Unanimous consent is eleven yays, zero nays.
Eleven yays, zero nays, the motion to move post haste carries. Next up will be the Committee on Counsel. Vice Chair Amos will be giving the report. Actually, yes, Vice Chair Amos will be giving the report.
The President, unfortunately, we did not have a quorum for today's time, so I would like to make a motion to enter into a committee of a hold.
There's a motion by Councilmember Amos, seconded by Councilmember Shook, to move into committee of the hold. Is there any discussion on the motion to move into committee of the hold? We can do this via unanimous consent without objection, any objection, move into committee of hold. Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to move into committee of the hold.
Unanimous consent is eleven yays, zero nays.
Eleven yays, zero nays, the motion to move into committee of hold passes. We now stand in committee of the hold.
Thank you. Vice Chair Byron Amos would like to call officially to order committee of a hold. Counsel, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
It's a motion by Councilmember Dozier, seconded by Councilmember Westmoreland, to approve the agenda. Any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? We can do this via unanimous consent without objection, any objection to the motion to approve the agenda? Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to approve the agenda.
Unanimous consent is eleven yays, zero nays.
Eleven yays, zero nays, the motion to adopt the agenda carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
There's a motion by Councilmember Amos, seconded by Councilmember Shook, to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve the minutes? Is there any objection to unanimous consent on the motion to adopt the minutes? Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to adopt the minutes.
Unanimous consent is eleven yays, zero nays.
Eleven yays, zero nays, the motion to adopt the minutes carries.
Thank you. I'd like to take items one through nine as a block and then ten separately.
Without objection? Go ahead.
Communications, twenty-three dash C dash five zero zero eight. A communication from Councilmember Lianana Barktieri, District Five, Alice Wong, District Six, Howard Shook, District Seven, Mayor Norwood, District Eight, and Matt Westmoreland, Post Two at Large, reappointing Ms. Suzanne Blam to the Tree Conservation Committee. This appointment is for the term of two years, to begin retroactively on August fifth, 2021, and expire August fourth, 2023. Communication twenty-three dash C dash five zero one six. A communication from Councilmember Byron D. Amos, District Three, Jason Dozier, District Four, Council, Michael Julian Bond, Post One at Large, appointing Mr. Walter Slaton to serve as a member of the Zoning Review Board. This appointment is for a term of two years. Communication twenty-three dash C dash five zero two eight. A communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Ms. Shanae Joseph to serve as a member of the Municipal Market Company Board of Directors. This appointment is for a term of two years. Twenty-three dash C dash five zero two nine. A communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Ms. Lawanda Barnes MBA to serve as a member of the Municipal Market Company Board of Directors. This appointment is for a term of two years. Twenty-three dash C dash five zero three nine. A communication from Council President Doug Shipman, appointing Ms. Yanana Gray to serve as a member of the Housing Commission representing the mortgage lending community. This appointment is for a term of three years. Twenty-three dash C dash five zero four one. A communication from Councilmember Jason Winston, District One, Amir Farroki, District Two, Byron D. Amos, District Three, Jason Dozier, District Four, and Michael Julian Bond, Post One at Large, appointing Ms. Alice Yan to serve as a member of the Stakeholder Oversight Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years. Communication twenty-three dash C dash five zero four two. A communication from Councilmember Jason Winston, District One, Amir Farroki, District Two, Byron Amos, District Three, Jason Dozier, District Four, Michael Julian Bond, Post One at Large, appointing Mr. Philip Perry to serve as a member of the Stakeholder Oversight Committee. This appointment is for a term of two years. Communication twenty-three dash C dash five zero four five. A communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Ms. Candace Rodriguez to serve as a member of the Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission. This appointment is for a term of two years. Communication twenty-three dash C dash five zero four six. A communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, reappointing Ms. Lolita Browning Jackson to serve as a member of the Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission. This appointment is for a term of two years, to begin retroactively on January nineteenth, 2022, and expire January eighteenth, 2024. Motion to approve those. I'll make a motion to approve those.
There's a motion to adopt these nine items. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Shook. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve these nine items? Since they're communications, we can do them via unanimous consent without objection, any objection to the approval of these nine items. Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on the unanimous consent on the motion to approve these nine items.
Unanimous consent, ten yays, zero nays.
Ten yays, zero nays, the motion to approve passes.
Last one, Mr. Chair, twenty-two dash oh dash one eight two three. Ordinance by Councilmember Andre L. Boone, Jason Winston, Amir Farroki, Byron D. Amos, Jason Dozier, Lianana Barktieri, Dustin Hillis, Michael Julian Bond, as substituted by the Finance Exec Committee to amend the Charter of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, nineteen ninety-six GA laws P point four 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 six nine, adopted under by such very virtue of the authority of the Municipal Home Rule Act of nineteen sixty-five, OCGA, section thirty-six dash thirty-five dash one ET square, as amended by amending Part One, Chapter and Related Laws, Subpart A, Charter, Article Eight, the Office of the Inspector General, to restore the full independence of the Ethics Officer and of the Ethics Office by removing the Ethics Officer and the functioning and duties of the Ethics Division from under the Office of the Inspector General and establishing a separate Ethics Office to provide for the selection of the majority of the seven colleges/universities in the City of Atlanta to serve as their nominee to serve on the governing board of the Office of the Inspector General and the Ethics Office. To clarify that the Office of the Inspector General shall be authorized to investigate or review certain matters concerning waste, fraud, abuse, and corruption to require city officials or employees and officials and employees or city outside contractors, vendors, and agencies to cooperate with the Office of the Inspector General or the Ethics Office regarding any investigation or review duly initiated thereby, to establish a process for the reporting and investigation of allegations and retaliation against individuals for reporting matters to the Office of the Inspector General or the Ethics Office, to amend Chapter Two, Article Seven, Division Two, to reflect those actions of the Charter Amendment and for other purposes. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to adopt.
There's a motion to adopt twenty-two dash oh dash eighteen twenty-three by Councilmember Amos, seconded by Councilmember Shook. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, we move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Eleven yays, zero nays.
Eleven yays, zero nays, the motion to adopt carries.
Next, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to refer this back to the FEC Committee.
There's a motion to refer back to FEC by Councilmember Amos, seconded by Councilmember Shook. Just for clarity for the public, this is a charter change, so it has to go through three rounds. So the procedure is appropriate for it to be referred back to FEC. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer? Hearing none, we move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer twenty-two dash oh dash eighteen twenty-three to FEC.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Eleven yays, zero nays.
Eleven yays, zero nays, the motion to refer carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the business of the Committee on Counsel. Our motion to exit committee of a hold.
There's a motion by Councilmember Amos, seconded by Councilmember Dozier, to move out of committee of the hold and back into the regular session of counsel. Is there any discussion on the motion to move out of committee of the hold? We can do this via unanimous consent. Is there any objection to the motion to return to full counsel? Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to exit committee of the hold.
Unanimous consent, eleven yays, zero nays.
Eleven yays, zero nays, the motion to exit committee of the hold carries. We are now out of committee hold and back into the regular session of counsel and still within the Committee on Counsel's report.
Yes, sir. Just for clarification, with those two things coming out of committee as a whole, do we still need to adopt them as counsel? Sound good. So with that being said, to clarify, all items coming out of, I'll make a motion to approve all items coming out of Committee on Counsel report.
There's a motion by Councilmember Amos to approve all the actions within the Committee of the Hold by the full counsel. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Hillis. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve all the actions within the Committee of the Hold? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to approve all of the items within Committee of the Hold's actions.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Eleven yays, zero nays.
Eleven yays, zero nays, the motion to approve all of the actions carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. That ends the report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Amos. Next, we will move to the Zoning Committee. Chair Overstreet.
Thank you, President Shipman. We'll start our zoning committee report on page thirty-eight of your agendas. And I would like to start with number one. Number one, Legislative Number twenty-two dash oh dash, well, we're starting with ordinances for second read, number one. Number one, Legislative Number twenty-two dash oh dash fifteen eighty-three, case number Z dash twenty-two dash forty-six, location nine ninety and one oh oh eight Brady Avenue Northwest. The ordinance is to rezone from I two heavy industrial to MRC three mixed residential commercial. The committee refer items number one back to ZRB and the NPU for further review. I move to refer to zoning review board. Is there a second?
There's a motion by Councilmember Overstreet, seconded by Councilmember Winston, to refer twenty-two dash oh dash fifteen eighty-three to the ZRB. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer this item.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Ten yays, zero nays.
Ten yays, zero nays, the motion to refer carries.
Thank you. We're moving on to number two. Legislative Number twenty-two dash oh dash one nine zero zero, case number MRPA dash twenty-two dash oh five. Location is twenty twenty-two West Paces Ferry Road Northwest. The ordinance is to grant a certificate under the provision of the Metropolitan River Protection Act to allow, in addition to, a single-family dwelling. Item number two was favorable, so I move to adopt.
There's a motion to adopt twenty-two dash oh dash nineteen hundred coming out of committee. It doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Eleven yays, zero nays.
Eleven yays, zero nays, the motion to adopt carries.
Thank you. Moving to number three. Legislative Number twenty-three dash oh dash ten eleven, case number Z dash twenty-three dash twelve. The location is Tuxedo Park Neighborhood District. The ordinance is creating is to create a new chapter eighteen Y, SPI twenty-five, to be entitled The ordinance is creating is to create a new Chapter 18Y SPI 25 to be entitled Tuxedo Park Neighborhood District Regulations. Item number three was favorable as substituted, so I move to adopt as substituted.
There's a motion to adopt 23 dash O dash 1011, coming out of committee as substituted. It doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt as substituted? Hearing none, we move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt as substituted.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, 12 yays, zero nays.
12 yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt as substituted carries.
Thank you. Moving on to items for first read, we have 10 items, number 14 through, I mean, four through 13 are first reads, and I would like to take these as a block, Mr. President.
Without objection, please proceed.
Thank you. Number four, Legislative Number 23 dash O dash 1155, case number Z dash 23 dash O4. Location 1508, 1512, 1516, 1522, 1526 Hardy Street Northeast. The ordinance is to rezone from R52 Family Residential to MR3 Multi-Family Residential, number five. 23 dash O dash 1156, case number Z dash 23 dash O5. Location 120 Rogers Street Northeast. The ordinance is to rezone from I1 Light Industrial to MRC1 Multi-Family Residential, number six. 23 dash O dash 1157, case number Z dash 23 dash O6. Location 342 Payne's Avenue Northwest. The ordinance is to rezone from SPI 3 SA1 English Avenue Special Public Interest District Subarea 1 to SPI 3 SA5 English Avenue Special Public Interest District Subarea 3. Number seven, 23 dash O dash 1158, case number Z dash 23 dash O7. Location 661 and 663 11th Street Northwest. The purpose, the ordinance is to rezone from I1 MSA Light Residential, excuse me, Light Industrial Marietta Street Artery Overlay to MRC MSA Mixed Residential Commercial Marietta Street Artery Overlay. Number eight, 23 dash O dash 1159, case number Z dash 23 dash O8. Location 685, 689, 699, and 701 11th Street Northwest. The ordinance is to rezone from MRC3 MSA Mixed Residential Commercial Marietta Street Artery Overlay and I1 MSA Light Industrial Marietta Street Artery Overlay to MRC3 MSA Mixed Residential Commercial Marietta Street Artery Overlay. And number nine, 23 dash O dash 1160, case number Z dash 23 dash O9. Location 1121 Tucker Avenue Southwest. The ordinance is to rezone from R4A HC20MBL, which is Single Family Residential Oakland City Historic District Beltline Overlay to MRC2 HC20MBL, Mixed Residential Commercial Oakland City Historic District Beltline Overlay. Number 10, 23 dash O dash 1161, case number Z dash 23 dash 10. Location 2685 and 2725 Campbellton Road Southwest and 1919 Dotson Road Southwest. The ordinance is to rezone from MRC2CCRO, Mixed Residential Commercial Conditional Campbellton Road Overlay and R4 Single Family Residential to MRC2CCRO, Mixed Residential Commercial Conditional Campbellton Road Overlay for a major site plan amendment, number 11. Legislative Number 23 dash O dash 1162, case number Z dash 2311. Location 1180, 2138, 2146, 2152, and 2158 Jackson Place Southwest. The ordinance is to rezone from R4 Single Family Residential to R4B Single Family Residential, number 12. 23 dash O dash 1163, case number U dash 23 dash O3. Location 661 and 663 11th Street Northwest. The ordinance is for a special use permit for a hotel. Number 13, 23 dash O dash 1164, case number U dash 23 dash O4. Location 1374 Arkright Place Southeast. The ordinance is for a special use permit for outdoor dining at an eating and drinking establishment. The motion is to refer items number four through 13 to ZRB and Zoning Committee.
There's a motion to refer all of these items to ZRB and Zoning Committee. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Norwood. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer? Hearing none, we move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer all of these items.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? You know I'm gonna read every word. The vote is closed, 11 yays, zero nays.
11 yays, zero nays. The motion to refer carries.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next will be the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, Chair Hillis.
President Shipman, we have two items. Our ordinance is 23 O 1127. An ordinance by councilmembers Matt Westmoreland, Lenny Anna Bakhtiari, Amir Faroki, Howard Shook, Andre L. Boone, Marcy Collier, Overstreet, Antonio Lewis, Jason Winston, and Michael Julian Bond, as substituted and amended by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the contribution of a total amount not to exceed $1,616,603.00 to the Atlanta Fire Rescue Foundation to support improvements and upgrades to fire stations across Atlanta, authorizing the chief financial officer to transfer funds from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. It was favorable out of committee on substitute as amended on condition while, I consider the condition met, we're going to refer this. I'm going to make a motion instead to refer this back to committee for further discussion.
There's a motion by Councilmember Hillis to refer 23 dash O dash 1127 back to the PSLA Committee, correct?
Correct.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Shook. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer this item back to PSLA? Hearing none, we move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, ten yays, zero nays.
Ten yays, zero nays. The motion to refer carries.
Next item is Resolution 23 R 3274, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee to amend Resolution 21 R 3040 pursuant to which the City of Atlanta Alcohol Technical Advisory Group 3, or ATAC 3, was established to conduct a review and to identify recommendations for changes to the City of Atlanta's alcoholic beverage licensing procedures, excuse me, process, in order to extend the time by which ATAC 3 must complete its review and recommendation so that it will, shall be by no later than July 1st, 2023, and for other purposes. Recommendation out of the committee is to file, as this was adopted at the previous council meeting by an immediate consideration paper, so motion is to file.
There's a motion coming out of committee to file 23 dash R dash 3274. It doesn't need a second. It's coming out of committee. Is there any discussion on the motion to file? Hearing none, we move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file this item.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, ten yays, zero nays.
Ten yays, zero nays. The motion to file carries. Yes. In committee of the whole, it's up to the discretion of the chair, brother Mohammed. It's in committee of the whole, it's up to the discretion of the chair. Am I, I'm sorry, say the last part.
I said, I came here to make comments for that council on committee. I was told this morning, 11:30, they weren't gonna be here.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, the committee meeting did not happen. We went into committee of the whole.
Well, how can you continue to deny the opportunity for the public? I mean, you.
I'm sorry, I'm not gonna argue the point with you. Brother Mohammed, I'm not gonna argue the point with you. We can talk about it, we can talk about it afterwards.
Every time it's time for the public to make comments, I waited for the committee on council. What is it? This is not 1950, this is 20. Let me say it. I was told they were gonna have a meeting. I could have left a long time ago.
I'm sorry that you came to me, it did not happen.
That's wrong.
Councilmember Bond.
Mr. President, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules to allow Brother Mohammed to make public comment to the body and then to close out and return.
There's a motion to suspend the rules to allow Brother Mohammed to make comment. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Waits. It's, this is not a debatable motion. It takes a two-thirds majority to pass, so 10 votes are required, no matter the attendance. So we'll move directly to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to suspend the rules.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, nine yays, one nay.
Nine yays. Councilmember Westmoreland needs practice with his button pushing. Please change Councilmember Westmoreland's vote to an aye.
Duly noted, ten yays, zero nays.
Ten yays, zero nays. The motion to suspend the rules carries. Brother Mohammed, you'll have three minutes per committee rule.
If I may, I'll just say that.
Sorry?
I have completed the report of the Public Safety and Legal Administration.
Yeah, thank you. So, thank you, Chair Hillis. Chair Hillis has committed the PSLA report. Before we move to CUC, Brother Mohammed, I'll give you three minutes per committee.
Appreciate your support, Mr. Barnes, as always. But I want to make this comment today because I was at Community Development and Human Resources Committee on Thursday of last week. I heard some information that I was very disturbed about. We had appointees for conservation of the trees. We had a young lady that was part of the board for the store we have on Auburn Avenue. And it was said that by my chairman of the committee, I don't think it was the chairman of the committee, Ms. Bakhtiari, called Mr. Dozier, you are the chairman. She made comments that when it comes to a decision to allocate resources for the parks and resources for conservation of trees or anything that would be of the need of the public, we should balance it out equally. My concern is the people living on the street. And if you're gonna prioritize these other services as just as important as a person living on the street, because you had a public person, Mr. Dozier, that you allowed to speak, and I thank you for that. Kimberly Brooks, she made it perfectly clear with the information she had about the budget of Atlanta, she made it perfectly clear that we have thousands of people, 46,000 being set, and Atlanta housing only really care for about 10,000. But she said, that is not the real problem. The real problem is you have a state that is minimum wage, and most of the people don't even have enough money who works in the minimum economic jobs to make enough money to pay the rent. But you legislators, y'all have a way to come together and vote and collaborate for the interest of the lower economically empowered people so they can have access to housing? And let me be clear with you. I have known in my life since here in Georgia, I grew up in a city where we lived on a dirt road, Missoula Street. We had the shotgun houses, and we had the community that only respected it because that's all they had, but they took care. But here in the 21st century, the City of Atlanta got buildings that y'all have oversight on, buildings that are empty. You got houses that is in neighborhood that is still there because of lead and paint, because of the laws you say would not allow you to let people live in. But I say this, and I'm gonna end. How long did dog matter people who suffer in this state, how to continue to not get the support of you legislator? You Caucasians ought to be happy that we just asking for some housing, because what you done did to us, and you letting all these other people get access to research, diversity, Ukraine, this is an insult to my ancestors. I greet you as I did not greet you. Assalamualaikum. May I try the hotel, Ashay, Ashay, and Ashay, and thank you again, Mr. Westmoreland, for your support.
Without objection, we will be back into the regular agenda. Any objection? Okay. Next will be the City Utilities Committee Chair Winston.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item, which is on page 49, item number 1, 23 dash C dash 5044, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens appointing Mr. Fletcher James to serve as a member of the Keep Atlanta Beautiful Commission. This appointment is for a term of two years. This item was filed in Tuesday CUC meeting. The appointee requested to withdraw his nomination, so the motion is to file.
There's motion to file coming out of committee 23 dash C dash 5044. It doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to file this item? Hearing none, we move to vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, 11 yays, zero nays.
11 yays, zero nays. The motion to file carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you. That concludes the report of the standing committees. We'll now move into items for immediate consideration. I believe there are two, and both are from Councilmember Overstreet. So Councilmember Overstreet, I would invite you up for your two items for immediate consideration. You can take them in any order that you wish.
Mr. President, as she approached, I need to make a motion to reconsider an item at some point.
We should go ahead and do that, then, Councilmember Amos.
Go ahead and do that now. Okay. I need to make a motion to reconsider item 22 dash O dash 1823.
There's a motion to reconsider 22 dash O dash 1823. Councilmember Amos was in the affirmative, so he can make the motion to reconsider. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Overstreet. Is there any discussion on the motion to reconsider? Councilmember Amos?
Well, we asked the second, after we reconsidered, the motion was actually made to refer to FEC. It should have been referred back to COC.
Gotcha. So there's a motion to reconsider the motion to refer in order to change where it's being referred.
Correct, yes.
Right. Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion to reconsider? Hearing none, we'll move to, I'm gonna do this via unanimous consent without objection. Is there any objection to the motion to reconsider? Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to reconsider.
Unanimous consent is 11 yays, zero nays.
11 yays, zero nays. The motion to reconsider the motion to refer 22 dash O dash 1823 to FEC carries. So we're now back to the motion to refer to FEC. I would entertain an amendment to that motion to refer it to COC. Make the motion by Councilmember Westmoreland, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Bond. There's a motion to change the referral to FEC. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend the motion to refer? We'll do this via unanimous consent. Is there any objection to change the referral to COC? Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to amend the referral.
Unanimous consent, 11 yays, zero nays.
11 yays, zero nays. So now we have before us a motion to refer 22 dash O dash 1823 to COC. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer this item? Hearing none, we move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer 22-O-1823 to COC.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. The motion to refer to COC 22-O-1823 carries. Thank you, Mr. Amos. Now we'll move to papers for immediate consideration. Councilmember Overstreet.
All righty. So we're, first, I would like everyone to remember that I only would like to do papers for immediate consideration that are time sensitive and detrimental to our, our fiduciary responsibilities for the city. So I'm asking for your indulgence because this is something that, both of these papers are things that are very time sensitive. So we'll start with Elm's number 32, and everyone has a copy of both of these immediate consideration items. Elm's number 32297, a resolution by Councilmembers Marcy Collier-Overstreet, Amir Faroki, Alex Wan, Keisha Sean Waits, Byron Amos, Mary Norwood, Matt Westmoreland, and Antonio Lewis. A resolution requesting that the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority, MARTA, submits a complete financial audit of the MORE MARTA program to be paid for and administered by the city's Department of Finance and for other purposes. Whereas in 2016, Atlanta's residents voted to approve a half penny sales tax to be invested in the transit enhancement and expansions through MARTA. And whereas it is estimated by the Atlanta Regional Commission that the tax will generate $2.7 billion across 40 years, and whereas it is important that MARTA engage in a periodic financial audit to provide a full accounting of programmatic spending to illustrate to taxpayers that it is investing such a substantial sum transparently and prudently, and whereas to date, no such audit has been completed and made available to the Atlanta City Council or residents, Atlanta residents. And whereas recently, MARTA announced that it is changing the scope of MORE MARTA to prioritize the completion of nine projects. And whereas in light of this programmatic shift, and simply as a matter of due course, it is the view of the city council that MARTA should agree to begin the auditing process now to reassure Atlanta residents as the fiscal integrity of the MORE MARTA program. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Atlanta, of the city of Atlanta, that the city council of the city of Atlanta, Georgia, and the city of Atlanta requests that MARTA submits a financial audit of the MORE MARTA program to be paid for and conducted either directly or via subcontractor by the city's Department of Finance. And to be further resolved, that the scope of the audit shall include all revenues and expenditures associated with MORE MARTA since collections began, as well as local revenues and expenditures to support operations and capital projects within the city of Atlanta, as well as federal sources received and expended in the program's lifetime to date, including not to, not, but not limited to federal COVID relief funds and to it, and be it further resolved, that in addition to providing an assessment of MARTA's financial accounting of the MORE MARTA program, the audit shall provide clear and definitive answers to the following questions. Transparency and reporting. Does MARTA maintain comprehensive internal and/or external financial reports or budget documents for the MORE MARTA program from 2017 to the present? Has MARTA compiled, complied with state and local financial reporting requirements as well as program requirements outlined in intergovernmental agreements with the city of Atlanta? What documentations exist that details agreements on MORE MARTA expenditure share between capital projects and operating expenditures, i.e., enhanced bus service? Are expenditures consistent with agreements and documentation provided by the city of Atlanta? How has salaried versus contracted labor been accounted for? What was the methodology used in the, in the accounting, and what are total costs? Have MORE MARTA funds been commingled with other revenue sources? Bus operation expenditures? How was enhanced bus service defined? Do expenditures align with enhanced levels of service, LOS, provided? Has enhanced bus services, i.e., increased over pre-MORE MARTA levels of service, been provided since 2017? Or, no, are there periods of time when bus levels of service dropped below pre-MORE MARTA LOS and MORE MARTA funding was nonetheless expended on operations? If so, what were the financial impacts to the program? Were any bus operations previously funded by the 1% City of Atlanta sales tax subsequently charged to the MORE MARTA program following the rollout of the enhanced bus services? Identify the amount of MORE MARTA spending that went to net new service compared to any funding that went to pre-existing levels, service levels. Net new service would be any service level increases above the August 2016 markup. How was federal COVID relief spending or funding from any other sources applied to the MORE MARTA Atlanta program of enhanced bus services? Have MORE MARTA expenditures adhere to budget amounts? Have any additional, no, have any annual MARTA budget surpluses, deficits impacted the MORE MARTA Atlanta program? What has happened during years when MORE MARTA Atlanta program expenditures on operations exceeded budget, budgeted amounts? Capital spending. How are MORE MARTA Atlanta planning projects that include elements outside city of Atlanta jurisdiction, Clifton Corridor, Cleveland arterial rapid transit being funded? Have other jurisdictions contributed to share of project cost? What documentation exists that details agreement on which source of funds, one penny sales tax of MORE MARTA half penny, should be used for streetcar operating and maintenance expenditures? Is there documentation showing MORE MARTA capital reserve account credit debits over time? Does MARTA have an existing financial plan of execute, execute projects such as Clifton Corridor, Bus Radford Transit Beltline rail projects? Be it further resolved, that the city of Atlanta requests MARTA respond to this request on or before its next scheduled report to the city council's Transportation Committee March 29, 2023. Be it further resolved, that the municipal court is hereby directed to transmit a copy of this resolution to MARTA CEO, general manager, and to MARTA Board of Directors. Be it finally resolved, that all resolutions in conflict here with are, and the same is hereby waived. I move approval.
There's a motion to adopt Elm's 32297 by Councilmember Overstreet, seconded by Councilmember Westmoreland. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt? I would like to call the pro tem forward to take the chair. I would like to speak to this paper.
Please do, thank you.
Councilmember Overstreet.
President Shipman.
Thank you, Councilmember Westmoreland. As has been noted, I don't usually speak to specific pieces of legislation. In fact, I believe this is the first time that I've stepped down from the chair to speak to a piece of proposed legislation. But this item, and I appreciate very deeply my colleagues for bringing it forward and for their ongoing work around the MORE MARTA program. This, I would urge my fellow members to adopt and adopt immediately. In 2018, then CEO of MARTA Jeff Parker said, when asked about the success of MARTA in the last few years, and I quote, "I think a big part of the successes we found have been in much more open and transparent MARTA, where we spent a considerable amount of time with legislators, with neighborhood leaders, and with citizens." I think that we have all been incredibly frustrated over the last several months with the lack of understanding of finances, timeframes, decision-making that continues to go on in the planning and execution of the MORE MARTA project. And I think that this program has a larger burden than most. We collectively, as a city government, and as MARTA, went before the voters in 2016 and asked them specifically to fund a half penny tax in order to move specific projects forward in the city of Atlanta. And six years later, we do not have those projects, and I still don't believe we have a clear understanding of what money has been spent, what money plans to be spent, and what money we will have for projects in the future. I believe that an audit is one that is not burdensome, but instead will both allow us to have greater understanding and will repair the trust and the transparency that is needed between MARTA and the city, and between MARTA, the city, and our residents, who are the ultimate taxpayers and the ones in whose money we're asking to be used. So I very much appreciate this consideration, and I hope that it will pass and immediately be acted upon, and I look forward to this information and what we can learn from it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for those words.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay. Bond wants to add his name. I think I did have your name on there already. Waits. Yes, and you second.
All right. We have a motion on the floor, and it has been seconded. If there's no other discussion, Madam Clerk, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
All right. We were having some technical issues. You can blame them on me, and so we're going to take a voice vote. Councilmember Winston, how would you like to vote? Councilmember Amos. Councilmember Dozier. Councilmember Shook. Councilmember Overstreet.
Over.
Councilmember Hillis. Councilmember Boone. Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Bond. Councilmember Waits. I will also vote in the affirmative.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. That item is adopted.
Council President, I move to send it posthaste to the mayor's office.
We have a motion to send it to the mayor's office posthaste, and a second on unanimous consent of those present. If there is no objection, we will send this item to the mayor's office posthaste. By what count?
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. That item is sent to the mayor's office posthaste. Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to our next item for immediate consideration. This, too, is time sensitive and needs to be voted on immediately. Elm's ID number 33, no, 32288, a resolution by Councilmember Marcy Collier-Overstreet, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the city of Atlanta certain agreements on condition that the city of Atlanta is selected by the Democratic Party of the United States to host the 2024 Democratic National Convention, including an agreement between the city, Choose Atlanta 2024 Incorporated, and Choose Democratic National Convention Committee. And number two, the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Atlanta, the city and the Atlanta Fulton County Recreation Authority. And number three, an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority, authorizing the mayor, chief financial officer, and other authorized desert needs to enter into and any necessary certificates, documents, or agreements to effectuate any of the foregoing on condition that the city is selected to host the convention and for other purposes. Whereas Choose Atlanta 2024 Incorporated, a Georgia nonprofit corporation, submitted a proposal to the Democratic National Convention. A District of Columbia unincorporated association constituting the governing body of the Democratic Party of the United States and its operational arm, the DNC Service Corp., a District of Columbia nonprofit corporation, in response to the request of a proposal issued by the DNC seeking a host, seeking a host city for the 2024 National Convention, and was invited and has invited the 2024 Democratic National Convention Committee, a District of Columbia nonprofit corporation affiliated with the DNC to hold convention in the city. And whereas the host committee is a nonprofit corporation organized and operated for the purpose of assisting the city in attracting and hosting the convention, all as the part of a nonpartisan economic development initiative benefiting the city and surrounding communities. And whereas the city is one of three finalist cities, along with Chicago and New York City, to host the convention. And whereas pursuant to Resolution Number 22-R-4037 adopted by the Atlanta City Council, the city council on August 15, 2022, and approved by the mayor of the city on August 23, 2022, the city previously authorized the funding or of a portion of the bid costs associated with the pursuant of the convention. And whereas the city council made certain findings and determinations in connection with the adoption of the prior DNC 2024 support resolution, including, among other things, and following one. The city is the cradle of the civil rights movement with a long storied history of leadership in political discourse, in the tradition of welcoming organizations across the political spectrum to the city. Number two, the city with its great cultural wealth, vast diversity, and its prominence as a global center of conventions and tourism serves as an ideal setting to host the prestigious national event. Number three, the city was included in the Best of the World 2022 list by National Geographic and was only America's city on the Best in Travel 2022 list in Lonely Planet. Number four, the city has a thriving convention industry anchored by assets such as the world's busiest airport, Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport, the Georgia World Congress Center, State Farm Arena, more than 90,000 hotel rooms, and a world-class walkable convention and entertainment district. Number five, major events, including conventions, drive economic activity and support more than 280,000 people employed in Atlanta's leisure and hospitality industry as the city continues to rebound from the economic effects of COVID-19. And number six, by hosting the conference of such magnitude in the city, both the city and the state of Georgia will benefit from the influx of public and private sector revenues, significant investments in the public safety infrastructure, as well as distinction associated with such an event. And number seven, if selected as the host city, the three-day convention is expected to attract approximately 35,000 visitors to the city and provide a significant economic impact for the city. Whereas the city council hereby reaffirms the foregoing findings and determinations. And whereas the city council hereby... And whereas the city council hereby expresses appreciation to the DNC for shortlisting Atlanta as a host city for the convention and gives its full support to bringing this marquee cultural and political event to the city. And whereas, in the furtherance of its corporate purposes, the Atlanta Fulton County Recreation Authority, AFRA, has determined that if the city is selected by the DNC to host the convention, it will assist the host committee in financing and ongoing costs and expenses of planning and organizing the convention, including, among other things, costs related to securing and acquiring licenses to use and operate certain facilities, constructing and equipping various convention-related improvements to such facilities and transportation, parking, and hotel accommodations. Whereas, in connection with the foregoing and after further review and consideration, the city council hereby desires to conditionally authorize the continued negotiation, execution, and delivery of various documents, agreements, and certificates to be entered into the city if the city is selected by the DNC to host the convention, and which are necessary in planning and organizing the convention, including, without limitations, III, an agreement among the city, the host committee, and the DNCC, whereby the city will agree to provide certain services related to the convention. III, an intergovernmental agreement, the AFRA intergovernmental agreement between the city and AFRA. Hereby, AFRA will agree to assist the host city in financing the cost of planning and organizing the convention and conduct certain other services related thereto. And in consideration therefore, the city will agree to make certain intergovernmental payments to AFRA for the payment of costs related to planning and organizing the convention, including the payment to principal and interest on the line or letter of credit, if and to the extent consummated, in the total aggregate amount of not to exceed $28 million, the maximum amount. III, an intergovernmental agreement, the Marta intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority, relating to the provision of buses for the convention, the cost of which shall be borne by the host committee for the purpose of assisting the host committee in bringing the convention to the city on the terms and conditions required by the DNCC. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Atlanta, Georgia, as follows. Section one, incorporation of recitals. The recitals set forth above are adopted by the city as findings of the city and incorporated herein. Section two, approval of funding of convention from excess hotel-motel tax collections. If the city is selected by the DNC to host the convention, the city hereby authorizes, ratifies, and approves in all respects the intergovernmental payments under the AFRA intergovernmental agreement to finance costs related to planning and organizing the convention, including the payment of principal and interest on the line of letter of credit, if, well, provided however, that the funding of such obligation shall be made, A, no less than quarterly by the chief financial officer of the city, B, solely, II, as designated by, and III, account of AFRA, and C, in the amount by which the city's collections pursuant to the 24.99% share of the net amount of the 7% tax imposed upon furnishing of public accommodations in the city levied pursuant to OCGA 48-13-51A5, as amended from time to time, as deposited into the city's general fund exceed $12,018,090. Provided however, that the total aggregate amount of the payments made under the AFRA intergovernmental agreement from excess hotel-motel tax collections shall not exceed the maximum amount. Number, section three, approval of city agreement, AFRA intergovernmental agreement, and Marta intergovernmental agreement. The mayor and the chief financial officer or their duly authorized designate need are each hereby authorized to negotiate, and if the city is selected by the DNC to host the convention, to execute and deliver the city agreement, the AFRA intergovernmental agreement, and the Marta intergovernmental agreement, and any certificates, instruments, documents, and agreements relating to such DNC 2024 agreements and convention necessary to appropriate to reflect the action, rights, obligations, and undertakings approved by this resolution and/or contemplated by such DNC 2024 agreements, all of which are hereby ratified and approved in all material respects after consultation with the chief financial officer and city attorney. Notwithstanding and foregoing in the city, if the city is selected by the DNC to host the convention, the execution and delivery of the DNC 2024 agreements by the mayor and the chief financial officer of the city or their duly appointed designate needs, as hereby authorized, shall be conclusive evidence of any such approval, subject only to compliance with the requirements of the city for the city to limit its transfer of excess hotel-motel tax collections to the maximum amount. Provided however, that the DNC 2024 agreements and any related documents, agreements, agreements, instruments, certificates, and other paper related thereto shall not become binding upon the city, and the city will incur no obligation or liability under the same until the DNC has officially selected the city to host the convention. Section four, authorization of transfer of excess hotel-motel tax collections. If the city is selected by the DNC to host the convention, the chief financial officer or his or her designate need is hereby authorized to charge to and make a transfer of excess hotel-motel tax collections to AFRA from the following account number, 1001, 10501, departmental account 3912066. Section five, actions of the mayor, chief operating officer, chief financial officer, city attorney, municipal clerk, and other officials. If the city is selected by the DNC to host the convention, the mayor, the chief operating officer, chief financial officer, city attorney, municipal clerk, and other appropriate officials of the city are authorized to certify any documents, agreements, instruments, certificates, or other papers necessary or appropriate to carry out the transactions contemplated under the DNC 2024 agreements, and to take such other actions necessary or appropriate for the consummation of the transactions contemplated by the resolution and the DNC 2024 agreements, provided that any payments under the AFRA intergovernmental agreement shall be limited to excess hotel-motel tax collection as and to extent available. And the total aggregate amount of the intergovernmental payments under the AFRA intergovernmental agreement shall not exceed the maximum amount as confirmed prior to each such transfer by the chief financial officer of the city. Section six, partial invalidity. In any case, in case any one or more of the provisions of the resolution shall for any reason be held to be illegal or invalid by a court of competent jurisdictions, such illegality and validity, invalidity, that's it, and invalidity shall not affect any other provisions hereof unless expressly so held. But this resolution shall be construed and enforced as if such illegal or invalid provisions had not been contained herein. And this resolution shall be construed to adopt, but not to enlarge upon, all applicable provisions of the laws of the state, and if any provisions hereof conflict with any applicable provisions of such law, the latter as duly adopted by the General Assembly of the state and as interpreted by the courts of the state shall prevail and shall be substituted for any provision hereof in conflict or not in harmony within therein. Section seven, repealer. Any and all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict with the resolution shall be and the same hereby are repealed. For purposes of clarification and to avoid doubt, nothing in this resolution is intended, nor shall be same be construed as affecting the city's financial commitments in respect to the convention pursuant to the prior DNC 2024 support resolution, which financial commitments are expressly separate from and supplemental to the financial commitments of the cities authorized hereunder. Section eight, electronic execution. If the city is selected by the DNC to host the convention, the mayor, the chief financial officer, and other duly authorized representatives of the city are hereby authorized to execute the city agreement, the AFRA intergovernmental agreement, the Marta intergovernmental agreement, and any and all other documents and certificates related thereto by means of electronic or digital signature, including an email, PDF, or a digitized image of the actual signature page, or by other electronic means, provided that such other means utilize electronic signature software that has the capability to audit or authenticate the signature. And such electronic pages shall constitute an original signature and shall be the same legal effect, validity and enforceability as the manually executed, physically delivered, or paper-based signature, as the case may be. And it is further found and determined that such electronic signatures are expressly permitted under the Uniform Electronic Transaction Act, OCGA, section 10-12-1, section nine, effective date. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon the adoption of the city council and approval by the mayor. I move approval.
There's a motion by Councilmember Overstreet, seconded by Councilmember Dozier.
Mr. President, I'd like to add my name.
To adopt Elm's 3228. There are several members that want to add their name. Councilmember Waits. Councilmember Bond. Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Boone. Councilmember Hillis. Councilmember Dozier. Councilmember Amos.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Oh, you want to add your name, Councilmember Winston, as well? Would like to add his name. Councilmember Winston, please reflect. Any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hold just a moment as we get the system back here. We're going to take a voice vote, given the system's technical difficulties. Councilmember Winston, how would you like to vote? Councilmember Amos. Councilmember Dozier. Councilmember Shook. Ten aye. Councilmember Hillis. Councilmember Hillis, how would you like to vote? Councilmember Boone. Councilmember Bond.
Aye.
Councilmember Westmoreland.
Aye.
Councilmember Waits. Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
I'm the mover. Yes. Ten yays, zero nays. Correction, eleven yays, zero nays.
Eleven yays, zero nays, the motion to adopt carries.
Thank you. I move to send this paper to the mayor post haste.
There's a motion by Councilmember Overstreet, seconded by Councilmember Bond, to send this post haste to the mayor. Is there any discussion of the motion to move post haste? We can do this with unanimous consent without objection. Any objection to moving this paper post haste to the mayor? Madam Deputy Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to move post haste.
Unanimous consent is eleven yays, zero nays.
Eleven yays, zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more item for immediate consideration. Councilmember Waits.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I'm reading in Elm's ID 32084. This is a resolution by Councilmember Keisha Waits. A resolution urging all stakeholders, news, media, communication outlets, parents, faith leaders, corporate, philanthropic, private sector, community leaders, and all elected officials within the city of Atlanta to unite in efforts to readopt the popular and effective public service announcement. It's 9:00 PM, do you know where your children are? This public service announcement and social media campaign is in response to the ongoing violence among young people and children after curfew hours within the city of Atlanta limits and for other purposes. Whereas the city of Atlanta has an interest in protecting public safety and the welfare of its citizens, especially children. Whereas the city of Atlanta has determined it would be in the best interest of the public safety and welfare of citizens to prohibit youth 16 years and under from being unaccompanied in specific settings pursuant to Chapter 106, Section 227, curfew law. Whereas the city of Atlanta has experienced ongoing instances of juvenile violence, criminal activity, and believe it is necessary to focus efforts on unaccompanied youth after curfew hours. Whereas similarly phrases such as "it's 9:00 PM, do you know where your children are?" were adopted many decades to tackle curfew violations nationwide and underage violence, including criminal activity. The phrase was originally used in the late 1960s to keep kids off the street at night and to combat rioting among juveniles in New York City and the Newark riots. Whereas since this time, variations of the phrase have been used widespread in many metropolitan areas as a form of concern when increasing youth violent activity has occurred. Whereas the phrase is typically used as a direction introduction to late evening newscasts at either 9:00, 10:00, or 11:00 PM. Whereas historically used in television as the city would further this campaign to include social media and radio announcements. Whereas all forms of media that are known to reach large crowds of people to bring awareness to societal issues should be implored or explored. Now, therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Atlanta that implores these, Atlanta City Council, to implore all media, communication outlets in the city to broadcast public service announcements and advertisements stating, "It is 9:00 PM, do you know where your children are?" Be it further resolved that the public service announcement should include television, radio, social media, and any media outlet that can reach large crowds of concerned citizens throughout the city of Atlanta. Be it finally resolved that all resolutions and parts of resolutions are in conflict here wherein, where with, or hereby waived to the extent of the conflict. I am favorably asking for your support. It is my belief the challenges that we've seen throughout the city regarding youth can possibly be combatted. We've had some challenges in terms of passing the curfew, given that the data at this time does not support making changes. It's my belief that this resolution creates a culture of accountability citywide, provides additional help with minimal disruption to parents, guardians, as well as stakeholders throughout the city. I'm clear that this is not a panacea, but it will, in fact, I believe, help to keep minors off the street and assist parents who may be having challenges with their young people. Again, I ask for your favorable support. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion to adopt Elm's 32084 by Councilmember Waits. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Bond. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt? Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmember Waits. I think this is a fantastic idea to put it, to keep it in front of every person, regardless of what vehicle of media that they may be watching or monitoring, to remind people over and over that we do have a curfew in Atlanta and that people should be mindful of where their children are. I remember seeing this. I remember this, seeing this growing up as a youth, but sometimes when I was over at my friend's house after the sun had gone down and the streetlights had come on, reminded me I needed to be on my way home. So I think that this is absolutely fantastic, and I'd like to also add my name.
Please reflect adding Councilmember Bond's name to the paper.
Thank you for your support.
Councilmember Overstreet.
I actually like this legislation, but if, I mean, I'm trying to figure out why this is immediate. Why don't you want this to go through committee?
Well, we have had several conversations surrounding changing the hours of the curfew. In fact, we've debated it, I believe, since Thanksgiving weekend, and we were not successful, given the data, as well as the lack of legislative support. And I think, given the number of youth that we have lost to violence throughout the city, this needs to be urgent, and this should be the top priority. I'm happy to send it to committee, but I think, given the previous effectiveness of the public service campaign and announcement, I believe that this is something that we can all get behind and support.
Councilmember Waits, I truly, I appreciate this legislation, but I don't feel comfortable not sending it to committee because of the way I've always voted on immediate consideration, except for when it is absolutely necessary because of our fiduciary or operating practices. And this isn't. It does, we do have time to send this through committee.
Well, respectfully, Councilmember, I believe that, given the investment that the city is making into the Democratic Convention, that probably should have went through finance. However, I trust the judgment of this administration, including this council, in terms of the urgency to move that. I don't think there's anything more important than making sure that our children are safe throughout the City of Atlanta. I am extremely frustrated that we have not passed a curfew to change the hours, given that we have lost the number of kids that we've lost throughout our city, but I don't want to debate that today. But I do believe respectfully that we need to take steps. I don't believe we should continue to wait and debate and have these types of conversations at this time. I think it's important that we do everything necessary to protect the lives of our children, and for that reason, I'm asking for your support today.
Is there a way I can make a referral to committee at this time?
A motion to refer is in order.
Okay, I move to refer to committee, please.
A motion to refer to committee, I would assume this would go to PSLA. So a motion to refer to PSLA by Councilmember Overstreet, is there a second? There's a second by Councilmember Dozier. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer Elm's 328, 32084 to PSLA? Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just speak against that motion. I think the resolution is self-explanatory. You know, it's obvious what it's about. It's urging people to use, you know, the PSA. I don't see what more or why it should be debated. And I also want to point out that the reason why we have listed in our agenda Papers for Immediate Consideration isn't just for, you know, the fiduciary risk or urgency of the city. There are matters that come up between our meetings, between our committees, that need to be addressed, and this is one, I believe, that is so urgent. You know, my colleague, Councilmember Waits, is absolutely right. There's been too many children shot and assaulted this year, and I think it's 80 children have been the victim of gun violence alone since this year has begun. And so if something were to be gained at public safety, I would guess, or if it was more detail that could be flushed out, but this is pretty self-explanatory, and it would be good to get this in the news cycle so they can begin running these ads as soon as possible, so that people know or can, just like this message is "do you know where your children are?", that's an urgent message. It's subtle. You know, it's southern. It's almost like when someone says, "bless your heart," right? But it's out there, and people know it, and I think that we need to begin doing this as soon as possible. And again, I don't see anything in the legislation that merits further debate a week from now. I mean, we've had it here. So I would speak against the motion to refer.
Other comments on the motion to refer? Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to clarify why I seconded this alternate motion. I do also have reservations about the need for immediate consideration. I recognize that there have been a lot of challenges with our youth these last, particularly since we've been in office during this term. However, I feel like there's nothing that this prohibits or authorizes to be done or without a resolution. This work can still continue to happen. We can continue to work with our partner agencies and entities, with our comms department and others, to encourage this sort of communication. There's no reason why we can't continue to have the conversation at the committee level. One of the things that I think about a lot, too, with regards to how this gets matched, is I was a 16-year-old once upon a time that had to work in the late hours to help put food on my family's table until 10:00 or 11:00 or 12:00 o'clock at night, bagging groceries, making minimum wage. And I know there's a lot of families out there like that, and I want to make sure that their stories are uplifted as we have this further conversation and a further debate with regards to this larger initiative that we have as a city. But the immediate consideration piece more explicitly is what made me take a couple steps back and want to see further debate and deliberation. So just wanted to clarify.
Is there any other discussion on the motion to refer? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer 32084 to PSLA.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Five yays, six nays, one abstention.
Mr. Lewis, do you want to explain your abstention? Or switch your vote?
Can I vote without, can I vote abstention without a span?
No.
Okay.
That's against the rules of council.
I'm voting no.
Please reflect, Mr. Lewis, as a no.
Correction, five yays, six nays.
Five yays, six nays. The motion to refer fails. We are now back to the motion to adopt 32084. Is there any other discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Madam Deputy Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Eleven yays, zero nays.
Eleven yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries. Councilmember Bond?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to quickly explain my vote. I always try to support members when they're at the point of having immediate consideration, and want to caution members as we take positions or philosophical positions on what might be on the agenda or how we deal with something on the agenda, that as a member of the body, you're an individual still, and you never want to limit the potential for your parliamentary power and resources. In short, you never want to cut your nose off to spite your face. You want to make sure that you're always availing yourself, and we as a body are availing ourselves of all of the parliamentary strengths and resources that we have to represent the public and get in our legislation passed. I withdraw.
Thank you, Ms. Bond. Councilmember Lewis?
And I think, since I got here, I think one of the issues we've had was with the immediate consideration papers going through. For some folks, folks will vote really, will vote a little bit faster for some folks to get them through. And so, Councilmember Waits, if you think that this is a paper that we need to get through, because when you think about the seriousness of young folk and some of the crimes that going on and people just having, folks getting kidnapped right now. So I do understand that we need to do this, but I also like to send stuff back to committee so that everybody can actually think about it and talk about it for a second. But I'm standing with you on this, Councilmember.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. I'm very respectful of this process, and I thank you for your support.
Any others who want to explain their votes? Okay. Any other items for immediate consideration? All right, we'll move into items for referral. Councilmember Waits.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Elm's ID 32267. This is an ordinance by Councilmember Keisha Waits, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to rename Bell Street southwest to Leonard Tate Street southwest to waive certain provisions of Section 138-8 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances and for other purposes.
Elm's ID 32267, we refer to the Transportation Committee. Could you reflect Councilmember Boone's name also as a cosponsor on that paper? And Councilmember Bond, and Councilmember Amos. Bond, Amos, and Boone on that paper. Thank you. Councilmember Westmoreland.
Thank you, Mr. President. Elm's number 32290, an ordinance by Councilmember Matt Westmoreland to amend Chapter 10, Section 10-92B of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances so as to provide an exemption from the distance requirements for package stores licensed to sell malt beverages, wine, and/or liquor by the package listed in Section 10-88.1 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances for one package store located at 1370 North Highland Avenue, Northeast Atlanta, Georgia 30306, and for other purposes.
Elm's ID 32290 will be referred to the Public Safety Committee.
Elm's ID number 32214, an ordinance by Councilmember Matt Westmoreland authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the Atlanta Workforce Development Agency, aka Worksource Atlanta, to execute a Worksource Metro Atlanta Targeted Outreach Plan Agreement with the Atlanta Regional Commission in an amount not to exceed $20,000 for a term of one year commencing on January 1, 2023, and ending on June 30, 2024, with two one-year options to renew. For the purposes of targeted outreach to increase participation in workforce program services, all contracted services shall be charged to and paid from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Elm's ID 32214 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bond?
I have a resolution signed by myself and all members present at all, Elm's number 32296, a resolution by Michael Julian Bond at all, a resolution requesting the establishment of a commission to determine an appropriate manner in which to honor Robert "Bob" Mance and for other purposes.
Elm's ID 32296 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Elm's ID number 32206, a resolution by Michael J. Bond authorizing the employment of City of Atlanta Department of Corrections employees Arlene Murray, Correction ID Technician, and Valerie Terry, Office Support Assistant Senior under Section 3-505A of the Charter of the City of Atlanta and for other purposes.
Elm's ID 32206 will be referred to the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Elm's ID 32204, an ordinance by Councilmember Antonio Lewis, an ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the reengagement of City of Atlanta retiree Franklin Rucker as Deputy General Manager, Senior for the Department of Aviation Planning and Department pursuant to Section 3-505A of the Charter of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, for a period not to exceed 520 days. Compensation will be charged to and from the Fund Department Organization and account number listed herein, an annual amount not to exceed $296,500 and 0 cents, and to ratify the terms of the previous contract for the reengagement of retiree Franklin Ruckler as Deputy General Manager, Senior for the Department of Aviation Planning and Development. All services will be charged to and paid from, account numbers listed herein, and for other purposes.
Elm's ID 32204 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Elm's number 32233, an ordinance by Councilmember Antonio Lewis, authorizing the mayor or his designee to waive Section 2-1163C of Article 5 Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances and other, and any other conflicting code provisions and execute the First Amendment to FC 9572 Security Screening and Inspection Service with HSS All-in-One, ATL LLC and Joint Venture on behalf of the Department of Aviation to extend the term of the agreement on a month-to-month basis for a period up to nine months effective May 13, 2023, through February 12, 2024, and an amount not to exceed $19,302,851 and 31 cents. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from, fund account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Elm's ID 32233 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
Elm's ID 32286, an ordinance by Councilmember Antonio Lewis, Councilmember Keisha Sean Waits, Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, to waive provisions of Part III Code of the Ordinances, Land Development Code, Part 16, Zoning Chart of 34 MR2C, MR Multi-Family District Regulations, Section 1634.0051, Permitted Principles, Uses, and Structures of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances for the purpose of waiving the distance requirements for an existing service station located at 1241 Metropolitan Parkway Southwest, Atlanta, Georgia 30310, and for other purposes.
Elm's ID 32286 will be referred to the Zoning Committee.
Elm's 32270, an ordinance by Councilmember Antonio Lewis, Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, Councilmember Andrea Boone, Councilmember Dustin Hillis, Councilmember Keisha Sean Waits, Councilmember Marcy Callioverstreet, Councilmember Byron Amos, Councilmember Jason Winston, an ordinance to extend the due date by which City Council must adopt the preliminary plan for the Moving Atlanta Forward Infrastructure Initiative, City Council discretionary amounts per Ordinance 2201369, and for other purposes.
Elm's ID 32270 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Elm's 32266, a resolution by Councilmember Antonio Lewis, a resolution requesting the MARTA, the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority, MARTA, to adopt disadvantaged business enterprise practices for the More MARTA Atlanta Program and for other purposes.
Elm's ID 32266 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Elm's 32227, a resolution by Councilmember Antonio Lewis, a resolution to allocate 25% of all amounts of money generated from the Public Safety Training Center to workforce housing, sustainability, infrastructure, and youth development, and for other purposes.
Elm's ID 32227 will be jointly referred to CDHS and FEC Committees.
And a resolution, this is a resolution by Councilmember Antonio Lewis, Councilmember Jason Winston, Councilmember Andrea Boone, Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, Councilmember Keisha Waits, Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, Councilmember Dustin Hillis, Councilmember Byron Amos, and Councilmember Dozier.
Hillis, Councilmember Byron Amos, and Councilmember Dozier.
That's referred jointly to CDHS and FEC.
A resul-- Elms, Elms 32265, a resolution by Councilmember Antonio Lewis, a resolution by Councilmember Byron Amos, Councilmember Keisha Sean Waits, Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, Councilmember Andrea Boone, Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, Councilmember Justin Winston, Council-- Jason Winston, Councilmember Jason Dozier, Councilmember Marcy Collier Overstreet, and Councilmember Dustin Hillis, a resolution requesting that the Court Administrator for the Municipal Court of Atlanta and staff from the Office of the City Solicitor make recommendations on establishing procedures to automatically expunge nonviolent municipal court criminal records after a period of five years from the date of the violations and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32265 will be referred to the Public Safety Committee.
Elms ID 32264, a resolution by Councilmember Antonio Lewis, a resolution by Councilmember Andrea Boone, Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, Councilmember Jason Dozier, Councilmember Byron Amos, Councilmember Marcy Collier Overstreet, and Councilmember Keisha Sean Waits, a resolution urging the Georgia General Assembly to pass legislation creating a clean slate law which will provide certain nonviolent individuals the opportunity to have their records expunged or sealed and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32264 will be jointly referred to, uh, no, will be referred to the PSLA Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'm going to recognize Councilmember Waits.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask that Elms ID 32084 be moved post haste to the mayor's office.
Motion by Councilmember Waits, seconded by Councilmember Bond to move the item post haste. Is there any discussion on the motion to move post haste? Hearing none, we do this with unanimous consent without objection, any objection to moving the item post haste. I'm deputy clerk. Please sound the count on, uh, the unanimous consent on moving post haste.
Unanimous consent, 10 yays, 0 nays.
10 yays, 0 nays. The motion to move post haste carries. Councilmember Boone.
Elms number 32269, a resolution by Councilmember Andrea Boone, a resolution requesting the mayor or his designee to install traffic calming devices on Delmar Lane Northwest and Cornell Boulevard Southwest and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32269 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Elms ID number 32279, a resolution by Councilmember Andrea Boone, a resolution pursuant to Section 6-306 of the City of Atlanta's Charter authorizing the City of Atlanta to donate $100,000 to the Martin Luther King Junior Center for Nonviolent Social Change, the King Center, in order to support the King Center Signature Violence 365 Training and the provision thereof to up to 400 Atlanta youth, authorizing the mayor or his designee to enter into a donation agreement with the King Center to authorize the chief financial officer to make payments from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32279 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
Elms ID number 32211, an ordinance by Councilmember Andrea Boone to ratify services rendered in connection with Agreement CPS 1210239 Kronos Workforce Management Systems with Kronos Incorporated beginning March 18th, 2023, and to authorize the mayor or his designee to exercise the second renewal option under the agreement on behalf of the Department of Atlanta Information and Management for a term of one year retroactively effective March 18th, 2023 through March 17th, 2024, an amount not to exceed $392,686 and 25 cents. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32211 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
Elms ID number 32293, an ordinance by Councilmember Andrea Boone, an ordinance to amend the Oracle Accounting Structure for the Mayor's Office of Equity Diversion and Inclusion so as to align Fund Department Organization accounts under Mayor's Chief of Staff to authorize the chief financial officer to create the appropriate department organizations and to anticipate and appropriate the necessary funding in connection with the Office of Equity Diversion and Inclusion to authorize the chief financial officer and the Commissioner of the Department of Human Resources to transfer any positions currently to any officer or department under the executive branch, to the appropriate department organization number under the executive branch, to the Mayor's Office of Equity Diversion and Inclusion and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32293 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Overstreet is back.
Elms ID number 32231, an ordinance by Councilmember Marcy Collier Overstreet to waive the Article 10, Division 4, Section 2-1205 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta's Code of Ordinances to authorize the mayor or his designee to enter into contract renewal option number two with Phoenix Concessions LLC SPS 1200368 Vendor Management Services for a term not to exceed one year with a retroactive effective date of August 12th, 2022 on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs to provide vendor management services for the Atlanta Jazz Festival. All contract revenue to be deposited into accounts listed to ratify any services rendered by and depositing of any revenue from Phoenix Concessions LLC from August 12th, 2022 through the date of the execution of the renewal contract authorized hereby and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32231 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
Okay, one more. Elms ID number 32230, an ordinance by Councilmember Marcy Collier Overstreet to waive Article 10, Division 4, Section 2-1205 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta's Code of Ordinances to authorize the mayor or his designee to enter into contract renewal option number two with Premier Events LLC SP-S-1200367 Festival Management Services for a term not to exceed one year with the retroactive effective date of August 12th, 2022 on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs to provide site, technical, and performance management services for the Atlanta Jazz Festival in an amount not to exceed $41,500 zero cents. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from funding numbers listed to ratify the acceptance of any services provided by Premier Events LLC from August 12th, 2022 through the date of the execution of the renewal contract authorized hereby and to authorize the chief financial officer to pay any invoices received from the provision of such services and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32230 will be referred to Finance Exec. Thank you. Councilmember Hillis.
Thank you, Council President. First paper is Elms 32298, a resolution by Councilmember Dustin Hillis authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of Roosevelt Council Junior Chief Revenue Collector of the City of Atlanta versus all that tract or parcel of land known as 1329 Gun Club Road. ID number listed, all persons or entities holding any right, title, or interest in said property, Superior Court of Fulton County Civil Action File Number listed, the amount of $60,000 and zero cents, authorizing said amount to be paid from the account numbers listed as follows, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the total settlement amount and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32298 will be referred to the Public Safety Committee.
Second item, Elms ID 32300, an ordinance by Councilmember Dustin Hillis and Andrea Boone authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute quitclaim deeds or leasing any interests the City of Atlanta may have in a portion of District Line Road located in Land Lot 259 of the 17th District of Fulton County. Fulton County tax ID numbers listed for the public purpose of returning property to an effective utilization status in order to clear title to the properties and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32300 will be referred to Finance Exec.
Resolution by Councilmember Dustin Hillis requesting the mayor or his designee to make the intersection of Parrot Avenue Northwest and Sedgwick Drive Northwest, Wells Avenue Northwest and Butler Way Northwest, Wells Avenue Northwest and Whittier Avenue Northwest, in the Whittier Mill Village neighborhood assoc-- in the Whittier Mill Village neighborhood, all way controlled intersections to request the Atlanta Department of Transportation to install stop signs at the intersections and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32278 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Elms 32274, a resolution by Councilmember Dustin Hillis requesting the mayor or his designee to make Hollywood Road Northwest and Brooks Avenue Northwest, Brooks Avenue Northwest, and Ada Avenue slash Lotus Avenue Northwest, and Hall Street Northwest, and Dupree Street Northwest, all way stop controlled intersections to request the Atlanta Department of Transportation to install stop signs at the intersections and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32274 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Elms 32275, a resolution by Councilmember Dustin Hillis and Andrea Boone requesting the mayor or his designee to make the intersections of Harwell Road Northwest and Skipper Drive Northwest, Harwell Road Northwest and Atmers Drive Northwest, Skipper Drive Northwest, and Jones Avenue Northwest, and Waterford Road Northwest, and A-line Drive Northwest, and the Collier Heights neighborhood, all way contro-- all way stop controlled intersections to request the Atlanta Department of Transportation to install stop signs at the intersections and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32275 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Elms ID 32276, a resolution by Councilmember Dustin Hillis requesting the mayor or his designee to make the intersections of Hollywood Road Northwest and North Eugenia Avenue Northwest, North Eugenia Avenue Northwest and Margaret Place Northwest, Johnson Road Northwest and Hollywood Drive Northwest, and Charlotte Place Northwest, and Maywood Place Northwest and the Grove Park neighborhood, all way stop controlled intersections to authorize the Atlanta Department of Transportation to install stop signs at the intersections and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32276 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Elms ID 32268, an ordinance by Councilmembers Dustin Hillis, Matt Westmoreland, Michael Julian Bond, Keisha Sean Waits, authorizing the mayor or his designee to name the bridge connecting Mary to Boulevard and City of Atlanta and South Atlanta Road in unincorporated Cobb County over the Chattahoochee River to the standing Peachtree Creek, Patkana-Hooly Bridge, to authorize the Atlanta Department of Transportation to design, fabricate, and install signage indicating the new name, to waive certain provisions of the City of Atlanta Code and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32268 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Final paper is Elms ID 32273, an ordinance by Councilmembers Dustin Hillis and Matt Westmoreland authorizing the chief financial officer to accept proceeds from the Northwest Atlanta Perry Bolton Tax Allocation District Fund on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation and to allocate and appropriate the Northwest Atlanta Perry Bolton Tax Allocation Fund proceeds in the amount of 100, excuse me, $1,705,000 and zero cents into the Atlanta Department of Transportation's 2021 Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, LMIG Matching Fund, for the resurfacing of Bolton Road Northwest and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32273 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Items, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Westmoreland, oh, I thought. Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, President Schiffman. First item is Elms number 32272, a resolution by Councilmember Jason Dozier requesting the mayor or his designee to install traffic calming devices on Graymont Drive Southwest from Avon Avenue to Venetian Drive Southwest to be specified and approved by the Atlanta Department of Transportation and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32272 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
All right, my next item is Elms number 32271, a resolution by Councilmember Jason Dozier requesting the mayor or his designee to install traffic calming devices on Sandtown Road Southwest from Centralville Drive Southwest to Venetian Drive Southwest to be specified and approved by the Atlanta Department of Transportation and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32271 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
And my next item is Elms ID number 32277, an ordinance by Councilmember Jason Dozier authorizing the City of Atlanta to grant a permanent easement on portions of certain real property located in Land Lot 77 of the 14th District, Fulton County, Georgia, tax parcel ID 14-007700020676, 14-007700020650, and 14-007700020664, and property identified as Fairley Street to the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the city to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the exchange and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32277 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
All right, my next item is Elms ID number 32207, a resolution by Councilmember Jason Dozier, Jason Winston, Liliana Bakhtiari, Alex Wong, Howard Shook, Mary Norwood, Dustin Hillis, Andrea Boone, Marcy Collier Overstreet, Michael Julian Bond, Matt Westmoreland, and Keisha Sean Waits, a resolution to adopt the goal of achieving and maintaining a 50% average tree canopy cover within the City of Atlanta to request that the Department of City planning use this goal to guide future updates to the tree protection ordinance and other land development related ordinances, and to request that the Department of City planning conduct a study every five years to measure the tree canopy cover within a city to, in order to evaluate the effectiveness of the tree protection ordinance and other land development related ordinances in reaching and maintaining the 50% tree canopy cover goal and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32207 will be referred to the CDHS Committee.
Next item is Elms ID number 32262, a resolution by Councilmembers Jason Dozier and Liliana Bakhtiari requesting that the commissioner of the Department of Transportation erect signage in the public right of way along north and south sides of Edgewood Avenue Southeast, from Jackson Street Northeast to Boulevard Southeast, and Chapel Lane Street Southeast from Jackson Street Northeast to Boulevard Southeast, indicating that vending is not permitted in the area and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32262 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
And my final item is Elms number 32299, a resolution by Councilmember Jason Dozier appointing Mr. Joel Alvarado to serve on the Atlanta Housing Authority Board of Commissioners for a term of five years scheduled to begin upon approval of this resolution and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32299 will be referred jointly to CDHS and COC.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Amos.
Sir, Elms number ID 32236, a resolution by Councilmember Byron D. Amos authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to add additional funding to Agreement IFB-S-1220215, on-call post-certified officers with one Cloverhurst Aaron JV and two Metropolitan Security Associates in an amount not to exceed $1 million and zero cents, subject to and contingent upon the adoption and approval of the fiscal year 2024 budget on behalf of the Department of Park and Recorations and for other purposes.
Elms ID 32236 will be referred to the CDHS Committee. Any other items for referral today? Hearing none, we'll move to general remarks. Any general remarks from the body? Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two items. The first is want to thank all of my District 4 community members who came out to our quarterly town hall, not last week but the week before last, over down the street here at Wildly Brewing, District 4's newest brewery. So thankful to have you all and to see you all, and just a reminder, we'll continue to do these quarterly town halls every quarter, but just thankful to get the first one of the year out the way. The other thing I did want to acknowledge is today is the 20th anniversary of the ground invasion into Iraq. Yesterday was the anniversary for the air invasion, but today is the anniversary of the ground invasion, and just want to ask my colleagues and those of y'all at home to keep the military veterans, particularly those who served in Iraq, in your minds, in your hearts, as we all reflect on the troubled last 20 years. As a Iraq veteran myself, having served 14 months as a scout platoon leader in Iraq, is something that has weighed heavily on me this weekend. We lost 4,400 U.S. service members in Iraq. Another 32,000 U.S. service members were wounded. Another couple hundred thousand Iraqi local nationals were killed during the conflict. And so keep your veterans in, in, in your lives, in your hearts, in your minds, and just reach out to folks that you know who are probably thinking about this, but they shouldn't have to think about this. uh, but they shouldn't have to, uh, think about this alone. So just be sure to reach out to them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to announce this week's HelloFresh, uh, distribution with Second Helpings Atlanta. It will be Wednesday, March the 22nd, at 2:00 PM, right around the corner here at the Fulton Atlanta Community Action Authority at 341 Kelly Street. Uh, again, of course, there's no prerequisite to receive the help. If you don't need it, please pass the word along. If, if you need the assistance, you know, please, uh, come and get it. Again, we'll be at the Fulton Atlanta Community Action Authority at 341 Kelly Street, Southeast 30312, at 2:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Amos.
Yes, sir. Wanted to give a quick shout out to Elena Allen, um, the region for AA Athletic Director, um, of the Year. She's actually Athletic Director at Douglas High School. Yeah, I'm supporting Douglas. Um, but last but not least, also, the young men basketball team at Douglas made it all the way to the Final Four this year as well. So just wanted to give a quick shout out and congratulations to, um, A.D. Allen for her accomplishments and to the young men at Douglas for their accomplishments as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Hillis.
Thank you, President Shipman. Just wanted to let everyone know that this Saturday is an awesome event coming up known as Sweep the Hooch, uh, that has been going on for many years, put on by the Chattahoochee River Keepers. Uh, myself and the mayor and, uh, some others will be participating in that event, uh, cleaning up our Chattahoochee River in our efforts to, uh, bring our city to its river. So if, uh, those that are listening or anyone would like to join, just hook up Sweep the Hooch. Uh, and there will be a number of sites listed that you can go to, uh, not just in the City of Atlanta, but also within Metro Atlanta, uh, to help clean up our river. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis.
I am, uh, super excited to talk about, uh, the next, uh, few weeks, the next two, uh, weeks in our district. Uh, tomorrow in South Atlanta, we're going to have a job fair in the cafeteria. So myself and the folks from McDonald's, the folks from Kroger's, Chick-fil-A, Count Best Friend, and Six Flags will be in all lunch periods at South Atlanta High School. And then on March 30th, which also happens to be my birthday, uh, we'll be at Carver High School. We'll be in all lunch periods, same exact organizations. Our job is to get every single kid that wants a job, a job. So that's the next two weeks in our district. I'm super excited to announce those. And tonight, uh, we get to continue our family engagement sessions. Every single Monday night at 6:00 PM at Roselle Fan, uh, we have a opportunity to where folks can come and talk about parenting teens in the justice system, uh, gang recognition and identification. Uh, if your child is an active gang member, now what do you do? Effective ways of parenting in the 21st century childhood and effective communication skills. Uh, we have a lot of different things going on in our city and we have to find out ways to attack them. And we can't just, uh, blame folks for it. So come on out tonight, no cameras, no videos. Uh, this is real talk with real people. So I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Overstreet.
Thank you. Um, a couple of things. I want to first say thank you to, uh, The Links Incorporated for a very successful Black Family Day held at Greenbrier Mall this past Saturday. Um, and all of the partnerships, uh, that showed up, plenty of vendors, as well as Kiss 104, making sure that we were, uh, getting the word to the community for people that couldn't be there. Um, but we reached out to so many, uh, participants to provide screenings and, uh, resources. And, uh, for that, we're thankful because we do know, as my colleague has said, uh, several times lately, that there is definitely healthcare redlining happening now. And, um, we need to do all that we can to bring in as many partners as possible to make sure that we're giving our communities, especially our underserved communities, uh, the healthcare resources that's needed. So we're trying to piece that together as best we can because now our government is not doing so properly. So we're going to forge ahead and make sure we solidify that. So that was a thank you. Also, wanted to just make sure everyone knows that the, uh, work session for the short-term rentals has, has, uh, actually been properly, uh, publicized and rescheduled for the 30th. That's before our next full council. So I wanted to bring that up. Uh, Councilmember Dozier, Chair Dozier over Community, uh, CDHS, as well as myself for, uh, zoning. We're working in partnership with, um, City Planning to bring forth a work session on the 30th of March, uh, 1:00 right here in, um, probably full council chamber, right, in the Arrington Chamber. So that's what we're doing. And please join us so that we can all have a good short-term rental conversation.
Any other colleagues? Uh, hearing none, we'll move to our adjourning roll call. Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the adjourning roll. Oh. Council, just one moment. Councilmember Boone.
Mr. President, we'd like to wish, um, the Honorable Antonio Lewis and the Honorable Michael Julian Bond a happy birthday coming up very soon. Happy birthday. Thank you. Great public servants. Great public servants.
One, one more to add. Uh, Councilmember Bakhtiari, uh, happy birthday to Councilmember Bakhtiari, uh, which I believe is today. Uh, Councilmember Bakhtiari is in, uh, Washington DC today. So to all of our council colleagues, happiest birthdays. Um, with that, Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the adjourning roll.
No one has to work on April 6th. Just remind that. It's a national holiday. National Michael Julian Bond Day. No one has to work.
Council President Shipman, Councilmembers Michael Bond, Matt Westmoreland, Keisha Sean Waits, Jason Winston, Amir Farroki, Byron Amos, Jason Dozier, Liliana Bakhtiari, Alex Wan, Howard Shook, Mary Norwood, Dustin Hillis, Andrea Boone, Marcy Collier Overstreet, and Antonio Lewis.
Without objection, we will stand adjourned.